Okay, today is August 25th. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the month. Before we start the meeting, I wanted to make a few comments. Received an email from Mayor Mahoney on Monday referring to the comprehensive plan. And he said, "I just read the draft. It looks like a good piece of work. You were all off to a great start. Thanks for your work. It's much appreciated. Please share this with the commission." Signed, Mayor Mahoney.
That's good to know.
Okay. At the last meeting, we talked about the moratorium. And we had the commission approved a motion to request the town council consider extending the moratorium for three to six months. The moratorium was passed by the town council in March. And for those members of the public that have not, are not familiar with this, let me read the read part of it to you. Resolution R 21-3. "The Town Council of the Town of Chesapeake Beach adopts this temporary moratorium on the review of all currently filed development applications as well as the filing of any new applications during the existence of this moratorium. This moratorium is expected to last for nine months from the date of adoption. All time periods for any development project are hereby stayed until the moratorium is terminated by the Planning Commission and Town Council for any currently filed or future applications unless otherwise stated herein. The moratorium does not apply to category two applications. This resolution may be amended in the best interest of the town and the public. This resolution and moratorium does not apply to certain properties and development activities that are of record that has grandfathered prior to the date of adoption of this moratorium as defined in Town Code and any project currently in the development approval system which has received development plan and/or plat approval by the commission." In looking at that, I believe, again Commissioner Blackwelder will confirm. But I think it's our opinion that no further action, immediate action is required by the commission at this point. And the town council is fully aware of the moratorium and when its termination date and will take appropriate action, I'm sure. Commissioner Blackwelder, did you want to comment?
Chairman Brown, that's how I read it as well.
Okay. All right, so we, there's no further action that I can see, at least not tonight, on the subject. So I wanted to go to one other observation I had on, on our process here. One of my objectives in, in doing this as chairman is full transparency with the public and making sure the public has an opportunity to interact and comment and voice their concerns to us as we consider these issues that we're working on. That means I, we try and get the agenda out early and our zoning clerk has worked hard to do that. And I try and make it as understandable as possible for the average public so they understand what is going on, what we're considering, and they have an opportunity to, to make a comment. As we look ahead, we are working on the comprehensive plan. The law requires that we announce that the plan is ready for public review. Allow the public a full 60 days to review it before we hold a hearing to approve it and, and then potentially send it on to the town council for their review, consideration, and approval. As I look at our other process, we talked, we mentioned it briefly last week. The Town Code does not require us, when we're recommending an amendment or a change or a new zoning ordinance or code to do a hearing and/or to have any particular notice to the public. I would hope, and I'll ask the Planning Commission as these things come up, to join me in, in making sure that we put out a hearing on new ordinances and zoning code changes, et cetera, that we publish it with 15 days' notice so that the public has a chance to look at it and the public can comment on it. It's not required by law, it's not required by ordinance. It has been the practice of the commission in the past. And I think it's a, a good process and to get the public involved because I always learn something from them. So as we, as we go forward, we'll be considering or looking at some of the proposed text changes that the comprehensive plan will require to get implemented. And one other word on that, the comprehensive plan for the, for the public information is a policy document. It does not change the zoning code. It does not change the law. It does not require any action on the, on the town's part, on anybody's part. It's simply a guide, a policy document for the future. And so as we finish our work on the comprehensive plan, there is still a huge amount of work to implement this comprehensive plan, which will require zoning code changes, et cetera. Tonight, Chris is going to talk about some of those possible text changes and that would be required when the comprehensive plan is completed. We have a long agenda tonight. I've eaten up nine minutes of our time. So I'd like to ask the commission if someone would make a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have the minutes from the July 28th Planning and Zoning Meeting. I hope everybody's had a chance to read them. They are in the package that is published by our zoning clerk. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes?
I second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. And the same for August 12th. We had a planning and zoning work session. The minutes are attached to the package. Can I have a motion to approve the August 12th minutes?
In a motion to approve the August 12th minutes?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The, the next thing on the agenda is a public comment. So we'll open the, the mic, I guess, for the public. Public, as it says in our agenda, is on any item on the agenda, public comment will be accepted by dialing this number or if you're online here and you'll have a two-minute limit on comments received. That's so we can make sure we get through our agenda. So who would like to be first? Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Okay. Hearing none. Now, let's move on to item number six on our agenda. Commissioner Greengold has been working on a motion for a zoning code change. So Commissioner Greengold, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If everybody can look at the building heights in the Town of Chesapeake Beach, the Planning and Zoning Commission proposed zoning ordinance amendments that came out in our packet, if you can just reference that, I'd appreciate it. The first thing I would like to do is I move to add Amendment Four to the Proposed Zoning Ordinance Amendments Terms Defined, Code 290-43 in the Chesapeake Beach Town Code, which deletes the current definition of building height and inserts the following text. "The height of any building shall be the vertical distance of the highest point of the roof to the average grade level prior to construction or any site improvements. The highest point also includes any rooftop deck, fenced railings, widow's walk, or other rooftop additions that may be used as an accessory structure." And then I would ask Chris to pull up the, the code, if you would.
Okay.
If you can.
Yes, I can. It'll just be a moment. And Cindy, what section of the code?
So that was 290-43?
Definitions.
Yeah, definitions. My, my intention here is to first change the definition before we get into the heights.
Okay, I need to share my screen now. And there it is.
Okay. So if everybody can see the current building height definition.
Yes.
A building's, okay, bear with me, I'm going to read it slowly. "A building's vertical measurement from the level of the finished lot grade at the primary front entrance to the building to the highest point in the roof line of a flat roof." I'm sadly getting something in front of my, why am I getting something? There we go. "The highest point of the roof line of a flat roof or a roof having a slope of less than 15 degrees from the horizontal and to a point midway between the peak and the eaves of a roof having a slope of 15 degrees or more." So going back to my definition, I'll read it one more time. I'm trying to, in this height amendment, or height definition, I should say, I'm trying to be a little more clear about the exact vertical distance. So I'm saying, "The height of any building shall be the vertical distance of the highest point of the roof to the average grade level prior to construction or any site improvements. The highest point also includes any rooftop deck, fenced railings, widow's walk, or other rooftop additions that may be used as an accessory structure." Laurie? Did you want to second first before you ask a question or?
Motion to discuss?
Yeah, we don't, oh yeah, we can discuss it. We don't have a motion for a, a change or anything, but go ahead.
I moved to, okay, I moved to add Amendment Four, which deletes, which deletes the the, okay, which, which is going to allow me to delete that building height in that definition and include the new definition. So that's what Amendment Four is. And I want to add that amendment to delete this one and include the one I just gave you.
Through the comprehensive, through Chris's packet?
Yeah. Packet, I'm, I'm, you, I'm going off of this front page, but I'm having to delete that particular page because I need to have a, I need to first have a definition, a clear definition of what building height is. Otherwise, none of this makes any sense because the building height definition isn't clear enough in order to make a building height ordinance.
Can I, can I suggest, since, since you're going to the height amendment that we have in the package that we discussed that as Amendment One and Two and Three, discuss those three amendments and then if you want to add something else.
All right, if you would rather, I will hold off on Amendment Four and then I'll, I will go ahead and address Amendment One, if that would be easier for you. Let me go ahead and address Amendment One. Amendment One, I would like to, I would like to move to amend Amendment One in its entirety as follows. "Amend Section 290-19A, Tables, Requirements, and Exceptions," which is this one that you see in your packet, "to change the maximum building height in the residential high-density RHD district from 50 feet to 35 feet and in the maritime district from 70 feet to 35 feet as indicated on the table titled Setbacks, Open Spaces, and Heights. All current and future zoning districts in the town are to have maximum building heights of 30, a height of 35 feet. Those buildings in the designated 100-year floodplain as defined in the flood, floodplain management ordinance will not exceed the maximum building height of 35 feet." So why I had to change this is because all of the, 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 the words below the, the graph have a number four in it, which does not correspond to any ordinance or any number within our code. So I couldn't use any of that information. I had to change it entirely. So that is why I've had to change it. Do you see, Chris, what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so because you have the number four down there, anything below that table, I did not feel comfortable using. So I just basically changed all of that.
Right.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, yes.
You might want to turn on the light.
So the way that I changed it was to rewrite it and include the floodplain building height along with that. So may I read it again so that it is, or would I send an email so you have it in front of you? Would that be easier?
If you did that, I would bring that up to my screen so everyone could see it.
That's what I'm doing. Maybe I will do that. Hold on. Let me see if I can bring that up this second.
While you're doing that, the, what you're proposing is to eliminate any compensation for the floodplain?
Guys, just so you know, I lost. Can somebody talk?
Yes, can you have audio?
I'm here. Thank you.
My next. Audio visual.
Cindy, you're on mute.
We're, we're spending a lot of time waiting on this. We, we need to have something in, in front of the commission rather than designing it as we go. So can, let's move on and come back to this later. Does any objection to that? Okay, hearing none. All right, the next item on the agenda is a commission review of the draft comprehensive plan update. Basically, we have just a couple items. Well, we have more than a couple, but the first, first thing I'd like to bring up is in our work session on the 12th, there were two items there that we had, at least one that said we were going to come back to it tonight. And that is whether the review of the Kellam Field area and the town center was consistent with the comprehensive plan. I would suggest that we move that to the hearing, the final hearing we have on the comprehensive plan, comparing to make sure they're consistent rather than, because I don't think we're prepared to compare it to the town's plan right now.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Is, is there in actuality something in writing from that committee stating what their vision is?
I'm unaware of any. I think they're working on it. And so you can't compare what you don't have.
Right, right.
So we also had a public comment on the residential RVs district that we're going to include in the final hearing based on, it'll, it'd be a public comment, basically, and we'll consider it and go over it then. So I, unless there's an objection, I suggest we push both of those to the hearing to be held after the public, 60-day public comment period. Hearing no objection. The next thing, Commissioner Blackwelder had prepared 22 items to review. Some of them, we had discussed before, some of them are new. One of them is sort of ministerial. What I'd like to do with those 22 is begin by asking Chris what the status of that or any suggestions he has, then pass it to Commissioner Blackwelder for her to make a motion or whatever she wants to do with that one. Is that okay, Commissioner Blackwelder?
Yes. Oh, good, you have it up. Okay, so I went through the final plan and identified some areas of key concern of mine. Most of them, as you know, revolve around the resource conservation area because I believe that right now it is protected and potentially our rezoning it and resource conservation will constitute a hearing of replating open space, thereby making it unprotected. And so I would like to make sure that our plan refers to every plat of open space that came in with the resource, with the residential plan community under the growth allocation method as open space. And in our district description, identify that we are, as a purpose, that we are protecting existing open space. And if we do not do that, instead of protecting areas that were protected under the RPC district, we will be effectively giving them development rights that they don't currently have. And so that is one of my main concerns, but really I tried to keep to the highlights of things that I thought might put our council in jeopardy because a lot of areas of this plan, the way it's coming out in language constitutes some things that people don't wish to see. And particularly, they don't want to see fishing creek forests razed or developed. I think everybody is in agreement that Chesapeake Beach should do their part regarding affordable housing, but we don't need to solicit it or bring in large-scale affordable housing or workforce housing. I think our plan is a little bit too gregarious on that. And we also recommend a lot of dimensional changes that will open up densities that aren't currently there. And thirdly, we need to understand what's going to be allowed in the maritime district from a density perspective. And for that, we need a density package. And the, the code versus the district description versus, you know, we allow this, we don't allow that, there's tourist homes, there's hotels, all that stuff is not, it's not constituting a clear picture. And finally, there is a, a must statement in the funding mechanism for the flood, the flood study and follow-on flood plan. And it recommends a funding mechanism and an implementation program. Or when we get to it, it'll have the right wording. I think that forces the town council's hand. And I worry, I just hope everybody understands what a profound failure it will be if we take all of the money that the town council has worked to save and we fail to do key things like preserve our, our last beachfront property, like build the most popular project, which is extension of the railway trail, make our sidewalks and streets safer. And we take all of our money and we obligate it towards development in these areas. And that development as proposed right now, we don't know what it's going to look like because our code isn't clear. And most of what we think might be proposed there is development that people don't want. And so what effectively that would do is cause our tax money to pay to facilitate development that we don't want. And so, you know, I, I'm, I'm for a flood study and, and and figuring out a plan for the flood zone. But I do not want to tie it to funding in our comprehensive plan. I want to leave that up to the town council and we do not need to recommend a funding implementation plan. That can be done after we see the study and when we see what kind of projects it's going to recommend. So those are my highlights. I think that if we do some of those things, that people won't appreciate it. And I'd like to get the things that make us do some things that I think people won't appreciate out of our comprehensive plan. So that was my goal in creating this list.
So you're on page 53 of the comprehensive plan, is that right?
I, I started with page four, I think.
Okay, so we're on page four, so everybody can follow along. And page, page four is adding appendices to the table of contents. Chris, could you comment on that?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, that, well, if everybody wants to vote on it, that's fine, but I think it's, it's going to happen. All right, so moving on to page 51, that's item two on, on the list. Page 51. Chris, do you want to comment about that proposed change? Chris, do you want to comment about that proposed change?
Um, yeah, I, I, I don't fully understand it candidly. Certainly, as things stand now, there is a lot of forested open space that's protected by forest conservation easements and forest protection easements. And of course, there's open space that's part of plats that are effectively dedicated to open space because they're part of a legal plat. But I don't know about the residue designations required by stormwater management and open space regulations. I, I just don't follow what that actually, that means. Or what the real intent here, I, I simply don't follow what's being proposed here.
Okay.
I'll help you follow, I'll help you follow, Chris. Um, so the RPCs came in as a full development, requiring a full site plan. And the regulations say that no plat can be rezoned unless it follows certain procedures. And so right now, those plats are protected as residue areas, they're not developable. And if we do not include those as protected areas and we rezone it resource conservation, and under your rules for resource conservation, it's much denser than a lot of people's rules for resource conservation. But anyways, um, anything is greater than zero. So I would like to include those, document them, keep them protected so that we don't overpay or overdevelop. So that's the intent.
Okay, for the commission, I want commissioners to know that Chris Jacoby doesn't have any rules for resource conservation. The plan recommends that there be no residential and resource conservation. And, and that's what the proposal is. After the fact, the zoning ordinance would be amended to stipulate that. But uh, you know, I, I just don't, I don't, there's no harm in adding this type of language. It just doesn't make, it's not coherent to me as a professional planner. But I mean, I've added other things that are, you know, less than ideal in terms of writing quality. I, I, I can add it in there, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't think it changes anything. And I don't, I'm not familiar with the theory that if you change a zoning on a parcel that to a, a resource conservation, that, that permits development or that creates a development right that doesn't exist. That's typically not something I'm familiar with.
Okay, well, let's leave it at just in case.
Would you say that again, please?
I said, let's include it just in case.
Okay.
But, but.
Motion to include it?
But this is a statement of fact rather than a policy recommendation. This is just simply saying what exists. And I mean, we could quibble about the wording, I don't know that it makes complete sense, but I, we could add it. It just basically says, not only does the forest conservation ordinance protect um, open space, the, the open space uh, that's agreements uh, also do. But really, it's just the plats, the final plats that have been established there that protect the open space because they make them part of the open space required for the community. So if that weren't a change to the plan, that above means that we can change it.
Motion to include that language.
All right, so we have a motion to include that language.
I second it.
You have a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we all oppose. I'm not hearing Commissioner Greengold or Commissioner Rutke, I know, I have Commissioner Rutke, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Blackwelder?
Aye.
All right, so I um, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I said yes. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
All right.
What about Commissioner Brolk, is she in?
She's on mute.
I'm sorry, I voted aye.
Okay, unanimous, we'll include the language. Moving on to number three on the list. It says, didn't Cindy rewrite the section? Chris, do you want to comment on that?
Uh, yes, she did, and I, I pasted it in there. And I, I, I think it's as faithful as I remember it being. I was, I was advised that I was kind of meant to wordsmith it and make it fit in, and that's what I did. I eliminated the entire section that had been previously here and added this, this content.
Um, Chris, is this the one that has the veterans of foreign wars in it?
Yes.
Yes, we need to change that, please. I moved that we change back to the American Legion. Delete veterans of foreign wars and, and add, insert, American Legion. Is that correct, Larry? It's American Legion, right?
Yeah, the veterans of foreign, or the American Legion would not appreciate being left out.
Right, exactly.
I, could somebody tell me where we are? I'm a little confused about the reference.
We're on page fifty-four of the uh, of the draft.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Did you, um, you didn't want to include the bullets that were there before and the rewrite that you sent out um, after we collaborated?
Oh, gosh, that's right. I, for some reason, I thought that was that, that was it, but that wasn't it, was it?
No.
You're right. Um.
In my mind, we're erasing some important information that Chris included.
Right, we did have it, you're right. Um, there was more to this, actually.
There was a summary of the market evaluation that I had done that listed um, seven or eight bullet points that described the um, the existing context. But I sensed that there was some real disagreement with what that information suggested. So I eliminated it altogether. But, but I've certainly got it back in.
I think, I, I think Lori, that this probably gives us the gist of what we were trying to get at. The fact that we have a variety of commercial uses. We have little businesses in the village too, uh, that uh, you know, like the shoe repair person, et cetera. So I just wanted to get the idea in there that we do have a lot more than just a few things that we do see, uh, like row ones, et cetera. So I think it gives the gist, I don't, uh, I don't have the copy of what the entire text was, but I think this is okay, I'm fine with this, actually.
Um, I don't know. I, I might want to include the idea that um, you know, it's in our vision statement that we're looking for more storefront um, opportunities in town. And I think that is being lost in just including this part of the statement. So I'm not going to hardline it, but I think that that was a goal of, you know, our survey. And I, I know it was a goal of some other people.
Right.
Uh, committee. And I think that um, including it, it, it should be an easy, you know, paste in because we already wrote it. Um, so I would be interested to know what the other commissioners think about whether or not we should include um, some of those, those bullets that went out that represent um, a desire to have some, some more, you know, variety of economic development storefront activity.
Well, I would say it's kind of hard to say what bullets we can't see, we want that. You know, we need language, we need something in front of us. So if some, somebody can find that or something, we'll move on to uh, number four on the list, which is on page sixty-two of your uh, the draft. So if you all turn to page sixty-two. Commissioner Blackwelder, if you want, or Chris, would you address that first?
Uh, yeah. Lori had requested a um, a map showing the protective, the, the forest areas that are protected by easements. It was a considerable undertaking, but I've finally got it done.
That's, we're, I think we're on to something else. Chris, um.
Four, number four.
Okay.
I might be wrong about that.
Oh, the map's on sixty. That Chris was just referring to is on page sixty.
Okay, I'm, I'm just reading Lori's notes here.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
All right, so Chris, go ahead.
Now that I read it, I might have misunderstood it. Include map to reflect motions passed and agreements made reflected in minutes. Protected easements. Uh, as discussed, included open space residue. Okay, uh, so actually, I didn't think that that, this is where that proposal was going to go. Let's see here, oh, with resource conservation. Okay, so let me just pull up that map. Here is, whoops. Here's a map that shows.
Is that the one on sixty-three?
This map doesn't exist yet, or is, is not in the plan yet. This is the map that responds to the request and it shows forest preservation. These are areas that are preserved by forest conservation easement, uh, which is the traditional way. The lighter green, the largest area here is area protected by forest interior, protected forest interior dwelling bird habitat, uh, which was a condition of the development approval of Richfield Station. And then this lighter shade of green is really around Bayview Hills and there's a bit in the Highlands. That is forested subdivision open space. It's open space that's contained within a subdivision. So these are the forested areas that are within the various subdivisions that are protected by, by these means, these three means.
Chris, may I ask a question, or excuse me, Commissioner Brown, may I ask a question of Chris?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Okay. The, the green area behind Richfield Station.
Behind what?
Behind Richfield Station.
Yes.
There is, there is a parcel of about two hundred acres that we've talked about a number of times that Lori had said had been, I don't, not replatted, I don't know that that's the word. But regardless of what the owners of that property have done, are you saying that if it's within this forest conservation area, nothing can be changed?
Yeah, there's, there's no development potential residing in any of these areas that are green on this map. And there are some other areas too, that are not necessarily forested, but are protected by, you know, HOA open space. But, so no, Jan, none of these areas are eligible for any type of development or development rights.
Yeah, where is that two hundred acres, Lori, that you were referring to? Because you had a lot of concern about that. I just want to make sure that we're covered on that parcel because it looks like the Richfield Station people, not the residents, want to, want to do something different given their activity.
Right, so um, that plot is on this map, which I don't have. You said this is a new map, Chris, that you will include?
Well, if the planning commission wants, wants that included in the plan, yeah, it would go on, probably on page sixty-two or I explored a different, a couple of different locations where it could, could be.
Well, Chris, where is that? I'm sorry. Chris, where might that two hundred acre parcel be? Because I'm sure you know where it is as well, and you could show us on this map.
Well, the only parcel that's that size is the lighter shade parcel here. This huge areas that corresponds with the forest interior dwelling bird habitat. All of that. And I, I was looking at the plats late last night and I, I believe that's probably just over two hundred acres in size. So that's probably it, Jan. But I don't know the backstory that Lori was talking about.
So that, yeah, that's a plat. And I do have a concern because um, it looks like the reason that was redrawn was a result of um, our meeting on December sixth, or this memo from December sixth, and this memo from December third, and this memo from, this other memo from December third. And you know, none of these said that they were going to um, move anything with regards to the growth allocation area, which would have been the whole RPC. Um, but it looks like what happened was those plats were redrawn. And maybe that's why it's showing as a residential buildable plat. But if we did move those, um, I, I don't know all the intricacies of that, but as many times as we can put it, they're not buildable and that they came in with an RPC in this plan. That's what we need to do because this redrawing of the growth allocation area, if that's what happened, um, you know, nobody was notified in your memorandum that it changed. So if that's what resulted in that plat being described as buildable, let's get that fixed and let's just get that property protected.
Chris, do you have copies of those memos that Commissioner Blackwelder was referring to? Item?
I don't, and I'm not aware of any of this ever being considered buildable. I, I just don't know anything about that. It seems like something I would have been uh, informed about, but I, I just don't know anything about that.
Chris, it's just, it's this, um, it's the site plan review for revisions to section two block S, Richfield Station, major subdivision three-nine-oh-six-twenty-seven, that's not the one. Uh, that was a different one that we did on that day. Revision to section two block S, Richfield Station. So it's just, it was your, your staff memo for these two plaits when people were changing a pump into individual grinders and it created an open space for which the developer agrees to build a fence and plant a tree.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with any of this, though. That actually was um, a plat amendment concerning the, this part of the subdivision that townhouse part of the subdivision. And as a condition for allowing the, the developer to use grinder pumps, the planning commission required that they create a new open space where a public pumping station would have been.
Right, I just want to make sure that all the, that like the boundary of the growth allocation didn't change. That just, I mean, that's, that's why my motion last meeting was to research that plat because right now, it's being recorded as a residential plat that's buildable and I, I, that, I don't believe that that's accurate. And I don't want to accidentally rezone that area through our comprehensive plan, which will constitute a hearing that would allow us to rezone the RPC. So I just, I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. I'm not the expert that knows how to do this, you are. So let's just cross all our Ts and dot all our Is and make sure that doesn't happen.
As best as I can, Lori, I will assure you again that it's, it's not happening and that there is legal protection that's tied to critical area law and, and the municipal forest conservation laws. These areas can't be, and that, that plat change was, was all about the, the, that existing approved development. You know, it wasn't about anything else other than that. So there's, there's, I hope that puts your mind at rest. These areas that are green are perpetually and forever protected um, by the, the best laws that we have to protect land. And what I'm suggesting with this plan is that not only that, but we lay over a resource conservation on it, uh, which as you suggest, adds another layer of protection. It ties it into our zoning um, framework.
Okay, so if we can include that map and then note. Okay, so if we can include that map and then note on it that it's protected and why, then that would be great.
Okay. I'm, that is, that is a, a, a easy thing to do, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And I could insert this right into the page 62 and add the, the proper language that, you know, characterizes it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we include that on, add or near page 62. I'll leave it to Chris exactly where. But, and do I have a second for that?
You do. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. All right, we can move on to number five. Let me also point out while we're getting ready to go to this next one. I had a conversation with Chris today about when we can, how long we can continue to make suggestions and corrections to this. There was the discussion recently that after we made this public, that we wouldn't be able to make any changes to it till the hearing. Or that we were, we were locked in. And that is not correct. When we goes out to begin the 60-day public hearing period, individual commissioners can make comments that will have to be brought up at the hearing. Or obviously, pub, members of the public can make comments on it that we will discuss at the hearing, just as we're discussing these individual points now. So you will have at least 60 day, 60 more days if we set a hearing date tonight. You'll have at least 60 more days to review and consider and make suggestions on improving the comprehensive plan. So, number five, Chris, would you like to comment on that?
This is page 62, so let me move there. Oh, here I am. Include the agreed on wording. I'm sorry, I, I got this one mixed up. Lori, you might have to give me some context here.
Um, that was just work that I wrote for comprehensive reasoning to not allow residential development in the resource conservation area. And that, that paste is directly from our minutes to reflect what was discussed and how it, you know, out some of that discussion. So.
So, so this paragraph was something that we agreed to include, and we didn't put it into the, I didn't put it into this final draft?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's just add it in. That's a, I guess that's one of those ministerial changes, Mr. Chairman, you know, you mentioned.
Okay, so no action required. We already acted on that in the past. And will be included. Number six, page 66 of your, your draft. Want to turn to that, and we can discuss, Chris, if you have any comment on that.
Okay, let me get to page 66 for everybody.
Yep.
This is the page that begins commercial at the top.
Right.
Oh, okay. The longstanding practice of converting houses, okay, this concerns a neighborhood commercial. Here's the paragraph. The longstanding practice of converting houses to low-intensity commercial uses in this area is supported, as well as the construction of new residentially scaled buildings provided building units are complied with. And this might be a matter of confusion, because this, the, the intent of this statement is not to say new residential, it says residentially scaled buildings. In other words, commercial is the use that's allowed in this zone, and if it's built, it ought to be residentially scaled. It ought to look like it belongs in and near the residential neighborhoods.
So maybe just add some.
What?
Scaled commercial building.
As well as the construction of new residentially scaled commercial buildings, or non-residential buildings, whatever. Okay.
Like that, yeah. When I read that, it looked like, you know, we're talking about maybe some multi-use housing, or some this, that, or the other. So thank you for adding that.
Yeah, I didn't get that either.
Have we completed with number six? Is number six complete?
For, yes, I think it's complete. I don't know that anybody has any issues with that.
That's, it seems to me that's just an editorial change.
Yes.
Okay, number seven. Give Chris a second to scroll ahead, and then if you want to give us where we're at with number seven.
Okay, this concerns the master plan for flood risk reduction. And it uses a couple paragraphs to describe that this is an important thing to do, and we're recommending it be done. And it describes what the plan would be and what it would suggest. And it says that the plan must be supplemented with an implementation and funding program. Not only is this good practice for master plan, but it's actually something that's specifically required by our scope of work with the state. So whether the planning commission includes this in this document or not, we have to deliver it in order to remain true to our commitment with the state for funding this project. Which is to say, I can easily delete it if, if that would make the meeting go faster.
Okay, do it. Sounds good.
What sounds good? Delete it or leave it?
Yeah.
It's man, it's mandated by law. Is that right, Chris? So whether we have that paragraph in there or not, it, it's protected by the, the law, correct?
No, no, it's, it's not mandated by law. As I said, it's, it's good practice, and we would do it anyway. And the state is requiring that the, that the projects have this very thing in it. That it show how we can actually implement and fund the measures that would protect people and property from flooding. I mean, it's, it's what you do when you do a master plan. So they made it a condition of their scope of work.
Uh, this is, did I read earlier, this is part of the, the state's mandate? When you have a comprehensive plan, it has to cover so many certain items?
No, no, this is, the, the state has, has given the town a grant. The, the town competed with other jurisdictions for a grant to do a master plan, protect people from flooding in Cecilia or Rice. And, and as part of that work, we have to would be implemented. And that's, that's all this just says. I mean, the people that fund the state's pro grant, the, the town's grants would appreciate seeing this type of statement in it. I think it's good practice, but it's, it's, you know, if the majority of the commissioners just want to remove it, that's fine with me.
Okay, let's remove it. If, if it's part of the plan, it won't matter if we remove it.
So no objection to leaving it?
No, move it.
Okay. Number eight, page 75 in your drafts.
So are we leaving that or deleting it?
Yeah.
Delete it.
You're proposing deleting it?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second to delete it?
I second it.
All right, all in favor of deleting it?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, is that, do I hear Commissioner?
I, I, I'm no, because I'm concerned about deleting that. It seems like an important thing to have in our plan. So I'm, I'm not in favor of deleting it. I'm not sure I know why to delete it.
Commissioner Larson, do we have a?
Yeah, I'm for leaving it.
Leaving it? All right, that's.
Yeah, leaving it.
Two, two, who am I missing? Commissioner Rutke?
I said to take it out.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Rutke, Commissioner Braw.
Take it out.
All right, three to two, take it out. Moving on to number eight.
Um, guys, I lost my screen, so I, I have my paper, though. Can you all still see me?
Yes.
Okay, that's weird.
Your front scanner.
Okay, we're on page 75 of the draft.
Right. Okay, I have it. Um. So this is. Okay, yes. So this is just, um, this language kind of bothered me when I first read it, when we were given the housing chapter instead of the land use chapter before our meeting to discuss land use. Because it, it just, it has that wording that says that people are living in their houses in their communities at the expense of others. And so I don't think this edit really, you know, actuated any anything other than just getting rid of that statement that irked me. And I think it will bother other people if they're accused of living at the expense of others, just because they live in a house. So it's, it's just an edit.
Um, yeah, in, in keeping with that, I also think it's, where it refers to raw land, do we mean undeveloped? Uh, I, I don't know necessarily what raw implies, other than undeveloped or so I would be in favor of removing that as well. Just have land, not raw land.
All right, any other discussion? Do we have a motion to remove it?
Motion to remove?
And we have a second.
Mr. Chairman, just.
Yes, go ahead.
Just let me say that this is a very candid description of what restrictive zoning actually does in the housing markets. I don't expect you to, you know, applaud something like this, but it does provide some basis, some rationale for why the public sector engages in efforts to promote affordable housing. It's, this is the kind of the reality that some, it's somewhat uncomfortable to deal with, but it doesn't need to be in here. I'm glad that I've had a chance to at least share this with you. I thought it'd be helpful for the entire community to, to make the connection between their zoning and the ability of people to live in the community. But it's, you know, again, if, if members feel uncomfortable about something like this, by all means, strike it.
Uh, Chris, I left some of that idea in. I left, it is important to keep in mind that where Kathleen's edit, undeveloped land for new housing is in short supply, such as in Chesapeake Beach, restrictive zoning rules over time worsen affordability. So I did leave that idea in. I think that is an important idea to understand.
I do too.
But I think it was just a little bit over the top, the part above it. So that's what I wanted to cross out.
So this sentence here is what we're talking about, then?
Can you see your screen with the edits on it?
It, it goes from Chris midway in that paragraph, it starts, "So while zoning can minimize potential adverse impacts of development, it," and then from the word can, all the way through others, end of sentence, have been struck.
Commissioner Braw, you had a, you ought to comment about the word raw there. Did you have a change you wanted to make?
No, I just, I just, my recommendation was to replace raw with undeveloped.
Okay, so we have a, a proposal, motion, we have a second, and we have an amendment to replace raw with undeveloped. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, moving on to number nine. Yes?
Go up a little bit further to can.
Number nine is on page 76.
Yeah.
Okay, catching up. 76. Went too far.
Okay. 76 is, I suggested an introduction that summarizes where we're at and puts our goals where I think they are into perspective of maintaining our affordable housing and and being aware of opportunities and maybe future needs. Um, and so I just wrote a little paragraph that explained that our metrics are really good for our area and that while increasing the supply of affordable workforce housing isn't our top priority in Chesapeake Beach, it's always important to maintain an understanding of local and regional affordability. So it's an introduction to, you know, some of, to this chapter. Our residents, through surveys, expressed a desire for lower growth, not a, you know, not a lot of growth. And we have very good metrics for affordable housing. And we're getting ready to receive a high-capacity project. And I think that we are doing a good job, and will continue to do a good job on the metric and the, the issue of affordable and workforce housing. But the idea that we are going to go out and rigorously try to bring a bunch of affordable housing in and make all these these dimensional adjustments so that, you know, people's neighborhoods that they are enjoying right now are changed. I don't think that was anybody's goal that I heard communicated other than yours when you, you know, went over housing with us. And we did go over housing a lot. And we ignored a lot of things that people care about, like, like trails, like economic development, like, you know, a lot of other things. We just hit housing over and over again. And I think that despite that, we, we were proud of what we've done. And we want to do what we can. But we recognize that we have limited roads. We're getting ready to get a high-capacity project already. And we can only do some, we are a three-square-mile area town. We can't go after affordable housing and workforce housing projects as if we're Denver, or you know, someplace even landlocked. We don't have the ability to do that. And so this, this housing chapter, you know, it has a lot of strong language that, that indicates something I think that is, it's not my purpose. And it wasn't the purpose that was communicated on the survey. So I just want to soften up some of the language in this chapter.
So Chris, first question, it, it says, the revised paragraph says, when compared to other metrics, would you say that's correct? Because I don't want to put something in that is not correct.
It's one interpretation of the data, and the, the data flows from this page through a number of additional pages. Yeah, it's easier to find, it's cheaper to find a house in Chesapeake Beach than in Montgomery County. Right? Or in, in parts of Virginia near DC. So by measuring against the AMI, which is the area median income for this extremely wealthy region, we are affordable. But for people who live in the community itself, and we look at our own median household income, then you start seeing then you start seeing the housing affordability issues. And particularly if you make around sixty percent of the local median income, uh, you're not going to be able to live, uh, in Chesapeake Beach. And so it talks about that sort of dilemma. Um, and I would say, I thought the planning commission discussed this a number of times. And the reason why it's, has been discussed is because it's a newly required element of, uh, of state law and our comprehensive plans. And I thought the discussion was pretty reasonable, and it made it much less, um, ambitious. The, the effect of this, these recommendations are effectively to say, let's make targeted changes to our, um, various standards that prevent accessory apartments or make them extra difficult. Or let's make it so that we can build small-scale, um, senior housing projects within our existing neighborhoods. Um, that's, that's the gist of it. And I will say that the plan has to have some type of positive affirmative statement about addressing affordable housing uh, and workforce housing. It, it just, it, it has to.
Right.
Not because I think it's important or it should, but because that's what the Maryland General Assembly, uh, and Governor believe.
Okay, Chris, let's just clarify this, because I know for a fact that Jonathan Evans thought there was a law that required us to add affordable housing, and there is no such law that does that. The law requires us to add language that refers to the metrics that show that we're doing really well. So that's all the law says, is that we have to use this certain language, that we have to address the elements. And we can't afford to bring all this, this housing in at a scale that our town can't handle. We're still putting up signs to address overflow parking at Bayfront Park. We can't bring in all this stuff. Uh, we're not ready for it. We should continue to assess it. We should have, continue to apprise ourselves of the issues. But.
Laurie, you don't need to, you don't need to, you should have a discussion with your members on the planning commission, not me. I've given you all, you as the planning commission, all the information you need to make a reasoned judgment about this. The discussion is not between you and me. It's between you and Chairman and the members of commission.
Okay, that's, that's very true. I just, you, you've hit housing on eighty percent of our meetings and.
Okay, uh, let's, let's, let's stop right there. Um, we have a motion on, uh, this, correct, Commissioner Blackwell there?
Yes, Chairman, I would like to include the language that, um, includes that assessment. And if the, the rest of the commission would please, I don't want to put words in your mouth. So, um, if it, if you'd like to alter it, or I, I'm interested in your opinion on the, the included language.
Uh, we have a motion to include the language, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Alright, do we have two seconds? Uh, that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? Okay, we move on to number ten. Number ten on the list. Uh, Chris, you want to introduce this if you can? This is on page eighty.
Page eighty.
Turn in your hymnals to page eighty.
Are we going to start singing now?
As soon as the piano starts.
Oregon, yeah.
Uh, this says, included note indicating that chapter five land use recommends a change of the permitted uses in the table. Let's, let's list to here table six.
Yeah, so we discussed this in a meeting, and I think we agreed that it might confuse people. And so, um, I didn't post, you know, I didn't copy paste the minutes for this one because I was getting tired, but I could find them in the minutes if needed, and we did agree to include this note of.
There's a note right there, I've highlighted there. It's on page seventy-six as part of the paragraph.
Page seventy-nine, you're talking about?
Sorry, sorry, seventy-nine.
Okay, so if we could just add it to the table, just so people don't look at the table and get confused. That was my goal for that.
It's good enough to be confused.
So added as footnote five, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, I don't think there's any discussion on that.
No.
Moving along, number eleven, page eighty-two. Obstacles to housing.
Favorite chapter. Um, I just re, I rephrased, I suggested a rephrasing. Um, I also have concerns that, that listing code in the housing chapter, um, and I don't know the rules here, if that's going to somehow obligate us to write code in that manner. But, um, at the very least, I would like, um, I don't, you know, obstacles to housing is a lot like living at the expense of somebody. And I think that what we're, you know, just retitling it, regulations to evaluate when considering adjustments to housing capacity would be better phraseology. Um, I mean, if I had it my way, I would delete that whole paragraph, but, um, I, I think just the heading change is okay. Um, what does everybody think?
Is there any objection to changing the heading?
None at all.
I don't have an objection to changing the heading. I don't necessarily like the change. Um, I, I would offer that it should say, uh, regulations to consider regarding housing capacity.
Could you say that one more time so we get it clear?
Yes, regulations to consider regarding housing.
You said capacity the last time.
Yeah, I don't think it, I, I, I think, well, you can, you can have it, housing capacity.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just clarifying, because I agree, it's a little confusing to have it.
Yeah, it's wordy.
Okay, I'm fine. So the idea is considering them and not, you know, they're, they're obstacles in one person's mind, or they're, you know, things that protect people's neighborhood in other people's mind. And so we should consider the regulations. But they're not obstacles. People are living in their houses and finding enjoyment out of them.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Laurie. It's perception, and that's important.
Okay, so that's, uh, approved. The commission agrees with that. Moving on to number twelve, page.
Can I, can I go back to that, Larry? Would you mind?
Oh, yes, yes.
Sorry.
Alright, I know.
I'm concerned that we actually are suggesting that we remove parking regulations. I think in a town that is so short on parking as it is, that it's, it's a concern that we even bring that as one of the possible, uh, changes.
Can you point to where you're talking about?
The first bullet point, uh, we, the requirement that accessory apartment have two off-street parking spaces. In addition, make it practically difficult to add an apartment in the house. So it's, it's, it's basically taking the parking and, uh, possibly changing that code up so that we may have on-street parking or parking in front of other people's houses so that somebody can have an accessory apartment. And I'm concerned that in this little town that we're considering changing the parking requirements up, uh, it matters to all of us who don't have HOAs. For those of you who have HOAs, I'm, I'm sure it's not a problem. But for those of us who are not in HOAs, it's a big problem. You know, people are parking in the little alleyways or, you know, and there's always extra people in these places. So I would like to take that entire paragraph out, that entire bullet point out. I don't think parking should be messed with when it comes to, um, you know, obstacles to housing.
But it is an obstacle to housing.
Cindy, but anybody support just removing this section? Because we under, when we go over the code, we'll go over the code. Like, we don't need it here. I understand that there's.
I would rather re, uh, take it out myself. I'm for taking the whole thing out. I think it's confusing. I think it's, uh, it, it's just a way to introduce, um, you know, ways to introduce, uh, problems into neighborhoods that we don't need to have. So I would rather take it out entirely.
Right, and we, yeah, second.
Uh, is there, um, any, I mean, I, I agree with you. Why, why set up, you know, potential, have you thought of this obstacle? Have you thought of this obstacle? I, I agree, but I just, um, is any, I haven't seen this in any other section. Is, is that right, Chris, that we would present the, uh, a potential, um, disadvantage in, in a section?
Um, well, the, what this is essentially is a, is a, um, kind of a targeted list of changes that the town could consider if it wanted to open up more affordable housing without actual development. So as an aside, I, we routinely get requests from people. In fact, this, this week, I got a request from somebody who wanted to do it, a, um, a, a, um, granny flat above the garage for a family member. And I had to say, no, you can't do that because your lot is 6,000 square feet. You have to have at least 7,500 square feet. Um, so, I mean, we routine, I routinely turn people away who want to build a granny flat or, or something for a family member or just lease it out generally.
Are you saying a granny flat?
The typical obstacles that in real world, practically speaking, uh, limit people, limit their use of the property to, to do what, what could supply housing affordably.
But it means that we're, sorry.
I'm sorry, Cindy. Do you want to go?
I just, I mean, I, I appreciate somebody wanting, wanting to add on an accessory apartment or whatever, but not at the expense of the next-door neighbor who bought a house, not assuming that they're going to be approached on by extra cars, extra noise, extra intensity, whatever. You know, I think we're getting to the point where who cares where you buy or whatever. You're gonna, you're gonna have a change that you're not gonna like, and you're not gonna have anything to say about it because it's in the comprehensive plan, and doggone it, uh, we're gonna make these changes on you. And I just, I just don't think this is the way that all of us who don't live in HOAs want to live, having a, a comprehensive plan that has these caveats of how we might end up messing up your neighborhood. I think we should take it out and not, uh, and if, if we have to, if somebody is burning with desire to make this change on the town council, they can come up with a motion to, let's, let's address this issue. Let's, let's change the parking, and then they can change it. But I don't think giving them an idea, oh, we gotta do this to make an accessory apartment somewhere. I don't think we should have it in our comprehensive plan.
I agree.
I move that we remove the obstacles to housing section.
Definitely.
The whole section?
The whole section.
Well, that's, uh.
There's four, there's four, four bullet points. It's not, it's not.
I'd like to read them. I'd like to read them before I, and I think.
And I'd like to make a comment.
Everyone should get a chance to look at them.
Yeah, Commissioner Brown, if I can make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Cindy, I disagree that this is a mandate for changing these things for any Tom, Dick, and Harry that just simply wants to change it. These are, are, are factual items. Once you change the title, these are simply factual things that don't, as, as to reasons that you can't do them. Do you know what I'm saying? I don't, this is not a mandate at all. I don't interpret it that way.
Well, it's not a mandate, but I don't, I don't want to put things into the comprehensive plan that could be, um, suggestions on how to, uh, change a neighborhood that has a negative impact to it.
They're not suggestions as to how to change a neighborhood at all. I don't, I don't see where you're.
Well, the first one is the requirement that, you know, you can change your parking requirements. And there are some areas where it'd be really tough to add, uh, to add accessory apartments and, and have people parking, you know, willy-nilly wherever they wanted to go. I mean, it would be, uh, so I'm, I think that, that we have zoning laws and rules for a reason. And I'm just, I just think when you have these little caveats in here, um, you're, you're creating a situation where somebody's going to look in here and go, but, but look in here, you could do this, you could do this for me, and I'm.
It doesn't say we can do this. It does not say that. It, it, it's simply stating what the current situation is. It is not encouraging. I mean, if somebody wants to do this, they're gonna, they're gonna talk to Chris, or they're gonna check the code or whatever. And all of these things are in there. I, I just, I don't see it like you do. I, I disagree with the emphasis on, we're telling people what they can do to get around the law. I don't see that at all. If some wording needs to be changed in an individual bullet point, then, then let's do it. But I, I just, I disagree with, with the premise that we're encouraging people to do these things.
Well, Jan, I think part of the problem for me is that I don't really, we've never really done an analysis of what this means on given properties. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna, well, first of all, we did, uh, vote by motion that we only want single-family houses in the medium-density residential area. So, you know, that's protecting those people's neighborhood, the way that we decided to protect it. So I, I don't, we can look at the code at any time, but I don't think we need these in our comprehensive plan. And the other thing about the dimensional requirements, if you remove, you know, the 5,000 square feet, and then you go up, well, what does that mean? Or, you know, you combine lots, what does that mean? What does that mean on a bigger parcel? We have not evaluated what doing any of this means. Um, and you're right, it, you know, we changed the language a little bit, and it doesn't, um, it doesn't make us do it, but it's also unnecessary and, um.
Well, we changed the title to, uh, things to consider, which, uh, sounds a lot to me like maybe you should study it before you do it, change it, which I think.
So maybe we should say, you know, all this extra wording, um, parking for, you know, a very small bullet list, off-street parking for accessory apartments, um.
That I would agree with. I, in other words, no judgment, no judgment in the paragraph. So saying makes it practically difficult is, is somewhat judgmental, I guess. So I agree with you. Keep it simple.
That's how I feel about it, and I feel like it's a paragraph to have. It's not like removing it will prevent us from studying the code, um, and evaluating it more in depth. And then if we actually do get somebody, um, that's very high-level and can go over design standards for different things, you know, we might, we might have some better options, but to just list all this stuff out here and say it, you know, wrong, 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 gotta fix it, I don't think is appropriate.
Well, it doesn't say, we, it doesn't say wrong, 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 we've got to fix it. It lists.
It doesn't.
Regulations to consider.
It's that way. Um, but I, I, go ahead. I'm sorry, Chairman Brown. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, we, uh, I'm, I'm kind of lost in where we are in this. We had, we, we did change the title. Then we had a motion from, or a discussion at least from Commissioner Green go to remove the first bullet, and, uh, then we had one to make them briefer, uh, more concise. What, is there any action here? And we had one to, to remove everything.
Yeah, I think I made a motion to remove everything, and then I think we got a second, and then we had discussion.
Okay, do we have, we have a second for removing everything?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of removing all four bullets and the whole paragraph, the whole tamale, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Whole tamale.
Aye.
Aye.
Whole tamale.
Uh, Commissioner Larson?
Uh-oh. He's probably on mute.
He's having a tamale.
He's eating the tamale.
Chuck, you're on mute. He is eating something.
I don't see him.
I can see him. He's drinking water.
You're spying on him. He got tired of us.
The dog, and I, I muted myself. Aye. So I want a burrito, get rid of the tamale.
So we have uh, unanimous to remove uh, everything below obstacles on page eighty-two. All right, moving along to page eighty-four. So, Chris, do you have any comments, any observations?
Where are we here? To evaluate?
Get everybody to eighty-four.
Eighty, delete negative sounding language.
This uh, this, it seems like it's related to the first, the, the point that the commission was just discussing. Uh, it refers to removing unwanted regulatory obstacles. Since a variety of housing options such as duplex and accessory apartments often deliver homes without land development, and these buildings can be essentially indistinguishable from a single-family house um, as shown in those photographs. So these are uh, so Laurie thinks the language sounds negative and has suggested deleting by removing unwanted regulatory obstacles. So it's fair enough, we could do that, if that's what the commission wants.
Do we have, have any uh, any discussion, any uh, opposition to making that change? Hearing none, we'll make that change. Moving on to number thirteen.
Yes.
Thirteen on page eighty-six.
Can we, can we go back to page eighty-four, please, where we're at that?
Okay, page eighty-four, moving back.
All right. Um, it says um, support a land use pattern that encourages multiple housing types of varying densities. That is currently only in our um, in our residential village two, correct? That that's possible right now?
I think so.
But we have RPCs. Uh, we currently have townhouses, and you know, we, we have a lot of this stuff. Um, but the residential village is what's left to develop more.
I, I'm just concerned about the word support and maybe consider a land. I would say instead of support, I would change it to consider. Because I'm not sure that your, your judgment of saying, you know, do this. I don't know that we need this kind of intensity in this town. I would just say consider a land use pattern, not support a land use pattern. I don't, I don't know that we need to insist on changing everything up to uh, varying densities and multiple housing types.
I would support that.
I would move, I would move to the, uh, delete the word support and uh, insert consider.
All right, is there any objection? Hearing none. Hearing none. Uh, I believe that, does that take care of thirteen?
Our team is the same.
Well, we're, we're back. I'm sorry, we're back on twelve. I see you, you've put a note there for twelve, so you'll get back to that, right, Chris?
Yeah, I actually made the change. On my version, it ran over to page eighty-five, so I found it, I caught up with it eventually, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll find, then make that change.
All right, so we're up to number thirteen, which is page eighty-six. Edit the heading.
Explore and consider.
Uh, I'm fine with that.
Change support to explore.
Oh, okay. Explore and consider the opportunity. Okay.
All right, any objection to changing the wording to uh?
Explore and consider.
That's fine. That's fine.
Sounds adventurous.
Yeah. Do we get, do we get pet helmets and everything?
We better get a uniform.
All right, page uh, we're going back. I think it's actually page seventy-five, not seventy-four.
No going back.
Except we always do. Kathleen.
Yeah.
Chairman said he thinks it's seventy-five.
No, no, it is on, it is on seventy-four.
Okay.
Uh, the third paragraph.
The town should initiate a study? Yep, okay. So make the following.
So. Having to do with the pier, is that what we're?
So it's not that I'm deleting the idea of a pier. Um, it's just a picture of a pier that's like uh, island in the bay.
Yeah, 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 you're right. Although I don't see it here, but you're absolutely right, and I agree with that.
Yeah, I'm deleting a reference to a picture, and then I'm deleting the picture because I, I just find the picture very misleading, and um, that's all. And plus, we're, we're doing this flood study, and the picture is, is of a pier that's basically building on water, and we're trying to figure out how to take back land because it was built on water. So it's just, it's just a little, you know.
Okay.
Did, can, was the picture in there?
Uh, I'll find it, uh, Kathleen, I'll, I'll get to it.
Yeah, it was Kathleen, and it really is really sort of pie in the sky, you know, fantastical.
On page, it's on page one oh eight.
Okay, thank you.
But all the wording that says, you know, study a pier, aim towards making a pier, all that's still in. It's not, don't make a pier. It's just, don't use the picture.
I agree.
Okay, there is uh, so going back to page seventy-four, images of what a such pier would look like provided in chapter eight. That's uh, we're deleting that, and uh, the proposal is to delete the picture on page one oh eight. Any other discussion?
Uh, real quick, Mr. Chairman, um, the picture also shows a kind of concepts for Kellam's Community Park, showing how like communicating green space, protecting sea level rise, you know, water, open space together. Is, is that meant to be eliminated too, or just the pier pictures?
I don't know.
I don't think it should be.
Right?
I mean, I like. I, I think you should keep those pictures in because they're ideas of ways to possibly mitigate some of the flooding that we might have, because some of those plans, right, Chris, they would include some of those mitigation measures and some of these ideas you had, and that's the importance of those pictures, if you study them well.
Yeah, so we're, so we're just getting rid of the picture of the pier, is that right?
Well, even the pier can have some water, some mitigation, depending on how you build a pier. I don't know if that pier.
No, I thought that's what Laurie didn't want, is all I'm trying to clarify.
And also, I want to get rid of the, we didn't, I want to get rid of the arrow to Veterans Community Park because the wording says that we'll study where and what is the nature of the pier and, and that kind of thing.
Well, what's the matter with that? That's a pretty good idea. That there's an idea of where you would put a pier if you were gonna have it. That's.
Well, the wording says, study it, so of where we'll put it, and so I don't, I don't know if we decided on that yet, and.
It should be studied.
Yeah, I mean, if we study it, we decide to put it there, we can put it there, but I don't want to stick an arrow on Veterans Park. I personally like Veterans Park the way it is. I think it's a very elegant memorial that if we build over top of it, we won't see the bay. But, uh, you know, that's for another day. I think that.
I'll tell my husband. Thank you.
But I, I, you know, it says study a pier. I, I think all references that are very specific about the pier should come out. And, and I do like the pictures of Kellam's Community Park, but I know that there's a committee for that, and I know that our committee on the Welcome to the Community Advisory Group works very hard, and we, you know, we wanted to have our vision reflected, and so I, you know, I would just ask them if they agreed to those pictures. I love those pictures about Kellam's Community Park, but I, I think that they should be consulted as well.
Well, they will be, uh, because we're deferring that discussion until when we get a report from them, which we don't have. So that uh.
Do they know we're waiting for it, Larry, by the way?
Uh, I have not asked them for it, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know that they are.
We aren't going to withhold the comprehensive plan, waiting for that study. So if it, if it comes, it comes. If it doesn't, we'll, we'll move on.
Okay, cool.
So uh, yeah, so I'd say we, we leave the, at least the Kellam's part in there until we find out what they want. Black and. Any comment, Commissioner Greengold?
Well, I mean, about taking out the pier idea. I like the pier idea, and I think it should stay in there. Uh, the reason for those pictures is just that it gives you an idea of, of what the opportunities would be down the road, and I think it's a good way to imagine what the possibilities are. So I don't think it's a set, hey, we're gonna put it right there, and this is what it's gonna look like. I think it's just an idea for uh, you know, a park, because we're talking about enlarging uh, our park area, and that would be how we would do it, one of the ideas.
Well, I, I agree with you, so let's uh.
I move that we leave it in.
Okay, we have a motion to leave the picture of the pier as shown on page one oh eight in. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, uh, who seconded?
Kathleen.
Kathleen.
Okay, uh, so all in favor of leaving the picture in?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh, we have, uh, I think everybody except Commissioner Blackwelder.
I just have one.
I assume you're a no.
I'm a no because it's so confusing. We will never build that pier.
Hey, don't you say that about that pier. Don't like that pier.
Laurie, do you mean we're not gonna build that pier?
We, we have the picture. We don't have a pier. We're discussing the picture and whether the picture stays in the book. Uh, Count Commissioner Blackwelder is a no, and let's move on to number sixteen.
Oh my God, what page?
On page sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
We're going backwards.
Yeah.
I think it's a bad sign.
I'm gonna have to talk to the chairman about this.
Yeah.
Actually, this is a page I want to talk about. This is a.
I don't have control. Okay, so uh, uh, Chris, you see it's uh.
Yeah, um, it, it says, rescind the bonus density overlay on all lands designated for residential use. It's, it refers to residential use because uh, this section is talking about residential land use. Under the heading commercial later on, we say the same thing, remove it from all commercial zones. So I, I don't know, I think that should answer the concern, but maybe, maybe there's something more here that I'm not getting.
And isn't that one of the amendments that you uh, got for us to consider?
Yes.
Which uh, says take it out in its entirety?
Yes. So here, we, I mean, I, Laurie has crossed out all lands designated for residential use. Um, the only reason I put residential use here is just to tie it into the discussion of residential.
Right.
Wherever we allow it, I've said eliminate it. Not only that, but the final implementation section says it's gone as well.
Okay, so Commissioner Blackwelder, you want to uh, talk about this?
Um, I just, I think it's fine for the language there to match the proposal of removing the whole thing. I think it would be understood in that bullet, but if we remove the whole thing, it would affect residential. It would be more clear.
Would you restate that? I, I didn't quite hear it all, please.
Um, well, I think that we want to repeal the whole thing with Chris's proposal and his amendments, and what everybody wants to do, what we've discussed a lot. And so when we talk about the bonus density overlay, I think by being consistent and saying repeal it um, just simply like that, um, you know, it'll avoid the confusion of, well, it's just gonna repeal it for residential, or I, it's just simpler. It's just easier to understand. That's, that's why I put it.
Okay, uh, so I, I believe we have a motion from Commissioner Blackwelder to modify it as uh, shown on the screen. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Greengold, seconds. All in favor of making that change?
Aye.
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 Okay, so I think that's unanimous.
No, it's not.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's all right. I, I, I think it's unnecessary myself, and so that's why I'm saying no.
Okay, so we have one no. Commissioner Ricky is no, and the remainder says aye. Motion passes. So uh, motion number seventeen.
Can, before we change pages, before we go past page sixty-five, could, uh, I would like to entertain the idea, and I know you're gonna uh, boom at me when I ask you this, but I would like to entertain the idea of actually going down to bullet point one, two, three, four, which is continue to allow a variety of housing types in those parts of the Residential Village District designated on map blank as Residential Village Two, blah, blah, blah. I was just wondering, Chris, is there any reason why we have to entertain a variety of housing types in RV Two?
I.
Would that be considered downzoning, or what, what's?
Well, yeah, but I mean, the, the commission is proposing the downzone.
Everything.
RV One, they are, um, but there was this distinction that within part of the residential village zone, you would continue to allow what is allowed today, and that's a, a bigger variety of housing types. Um, having a variety of housing types is good, and remember one of the vision statements from the State Planning Office, it's in state law, is that we should have a, a plan that encourages a variety of housing units for.
Right, I'm just, I'm just concerned. I know, I know, I understand. I'm just concerned about that area getting over intense and uh, and uh, people trying to combine different lots and, you know, doubling up or tripling up on how many housing units in, in a very small lot. So I'm just concerned about over intensifying that area.
But we, haven't we been through this several times?
Yes, yes, we have. Somebody wanted to revisit that with me. Doesn't sound like I have any support to revisit that.
Yeah, so you're, you're making a motion to what?
Uh, I would like to move that we um, we change the, um, allowing the variety of housing types uh, to make it more, to make it like the uh, RV One.
So we eliminate RV2 essentially.
Are you basically, well, no, because they still have the non-residential commercial. They still have that commercial aspect to it. So that I definitely want to keep in there, cause that they enjoy having. But I don't think they all want to have a bunch of, you know, multifamily housing come into their community because that, uh, would intensify that neighborhood. So that's what I'm a little concerned about. I know some of the people are concerned in that area as well. So that's why I'm bringing that up right now to see if there's any support for that. And, uh, let me make a motion to, um, to amend the variety of housing types uh, in, in RV2. Amend to, we, we move the very, the variety of housing types to residential village 2.
Okay, so we're revisiting for the 18th time this, uh.
Sorry.
This thing, and, uh, do we have a second for Commissioner Greengold's motion? Hearing none. Let's move on to number 17, which is on page 98. So, Chris, I think, uh, I, I guess Commissioner Blackwelder, if you want to go ahead, I.
Um, so I just wanted to, um, this, this we approved for the implementation chapter, and just for consistency's sake, I wanted to include it in the transportation chapter since it is a pathways and business map. Um, so that's all it is. It's a motion to make the recommendation that we made in the implementation chapter and approved in the transportation chapter.
Okay.
And I wanted that. From the 2010 plan, cause it shows, um, basically all the businesses that were planned, or pathways and businesses that were planned, and then we'll add our WCAG um, ideas to it. We already passed that. It's a transportation topic, so I put it here.
So is this, is this, this is a graphic from 2010, right?
That's correct.
And is it accurate?
The recommendation is to update it with the bicycle pedestrian master plan. Or update it with the WCAG study and create a bicycle pedestrian master plan, which we did already agree to, um, when we were doing the implementation chapter. It's just, it's a transportation topic.
May I ask, are you asking to place this, this exhibit into this plan report at this section?
Yeah.
And, but its recommendations have been superseded by the, the study, right? The connectivity study? Which we've adopted.
Right.
Well, the recommendation is to marry the two and to, to create a comprehensive document. To continue the 2010 ideas through, through our plan. I mean, it's funny, cause the whole WCAG, I didn't know there was this in the 2010 plan.
This was actually in the 2002 plan. This dates back to the 2002 plan. And, um, but, but, I mean, do, do these lines on this map match up with what the connectivity study? I mean, I don't want there to be two sets of documents, two sets, two sets of proposals floating.
You're saying it's identical, Lori?
It's not, it's not identical, cause there's actually more paths here, which I would like to retain if somebody are to kind of plan on. Um, and then add ours, but it does.
It's confusing.
Yeah. Kind of funny that independently, without knowing, we came up with almost the same thing.
I think that just means that we did, did our job.
We did a good job. We did it a lot easier.
If, if we're going to replace this map, I, I think we should have a map that's clearer. I, I think this map is, is totally confusing. It's kind of like a Venn diagram. I mean, it's hard for me to understand it.
Well, to me, if it's not identical to, well.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't have time to make a new map, so that's why the recommendation is to marry the two. Like, we, that would be work that we would need to get done to make the bicycle pedestrian master plan with them all married.
Okay, so we, uh, I thi- I think there's two issues here, adding the, uh, some language there. Is that right? Uh, maybe not.
Yeah, yes, there is.
So I moved to add the language.
Yeah, so add the bolded language to the recommendations. Uh, I'd like to deal with the two separately. So do we have a motion to add that language that bolded on the, uh, the list?
I have a no. I moved to add the language.
I.
Bolded on the list.
I thought you would. Uh, is there a second? There's no second. Okay, so we have, uh, and, uh, question is the map. I, I would have to assume the map is the same result. Uh, unless I hear two people say they want to go back and look at the map, we'll, uh, move on to number 18. Okay, number 18, page 102.
102.
I didn't highlight anything. Hold on. However, comprehensive. So that's just language we added, um, earlier on in the municipal growth section. I think it clarifies that, um, those conditions might change, and it's just, I think it got added to the housing chapter is where this is. Or no, it's the land, is it the land use chapter or the housing chapter on 102?
Um, community.
Community facilities.
Yeah.
Oh, right, it's dealing with the school. So I was just explaining the, the claim is that the schools are gonna be all good to go, but it doesn't account for the, the new town centers. So it's just, we already adopted this language somewhere else, and it's just pulling it over to this statement that is like the statement that we adopted it to before.
So this, this qualifies the, the statement about capacity being available in the, in the Board of Education's projections. Adds a little wrinkle to Justin. It might not be right after all.
Yeah.
I don't have an objection to that.
Okay, so, uh, we, we have Commissioner Blackwelder's motion to add it. Uh, Commissioner Ruckey, will you second it?
I will.
Okay, we have, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No one opposed, so I guess it was unanimous. All right, moving on to page 120, number 19 on our list.
Inverted from 102.
Yes, it was. All right, so this is one of the more important things. Um, because we have regulations that, um, we aren't using, but, um, things reflect to, like the critical over. Oh, I do have a question. The critical overlay map, do we need to include it in this comp plan? Or is it automatically already in the code and we don't have to do anything?
Yeah, it's already in the code and the comprehensive plan won't change it.
Okay, so I just want to, you know, reference those different floating zones that are currently in our code. Um, and make sure that they're on the list of things that are referenced in that paragraph, and that's what that highlighting does.
Do you know what the growth allocation method is?
I do, and there's a, there's an amendment, there's a, there's a reference to the growth area zone or whatever, you know, that, that we would need to amend in order to include it, but I don't want to eliminate the whole code because if we do amend and make a growth area, we'd already have the code ready for us. So I, and, and certain areas in our code have come in under those regulations. I just want to retain them and continue to reference them.
Okay. Uh, for the commissioner's sake, the, the, um, growth allocation is the means by which the critical area, um, that's protected, like the resource conservation area, is upzoned to allow it to be developed. Where it can't be developed now, with growth allocation allows landowner to develop the property. And, and that's kind of a relief valve that's built into the zoning ordinance to allow development in the critical area.
Okay, so, uh, what is being proposed here is to, uh, add at the end of that paragraph after Board of Wardens?
This is, doesn't it say?
Where does? Move or reference?
Don't we already have that?
Sounds critical area regulations, including the growth allocation method. It's, it's the, um, growth allocation floating zone. It's named as a floating zone in our code. And the growth allocation method is a method that reference back to, so it's two different things. And then the critical area overlay, um, I just want to mention all, I, I basically went to our code and found all the floating zones and added the ones that weren't added there. And, um, did we already add that in the residential plan community?
I can't remember. I guess not. It would be a paragraph.
I didn't. Let's add all the, all those zones that are in our code currently.
You mean all the special types, like the RPC in a critical area?
Yeah.
Except for the bonus density overlay. I don't think we want to mention that. Okay.
Well, yeah, we can mention and say it's being deleted, but, um, yeah.
Okay, so I mean, this is not like a, a change that changes anything recommendation wise in the plan. It just adds a little context to what the current zoning ordinance, um, provides for.
Yes, and, and please remember to add that RPC, cause I forgot to add it in my edit.
There it is, right there.
Oh, that's why I didn't add it.
Okay, it's gone. I, all right. How's that? I think that works.
Work.
Uh, just growth allocation floating zone and the growth allocation method. And the residence between many, in addition. Did, we need the ends, or can we just have it at, at the, you know, after town, towns critical area overlay, district, growth allocation, floating zone, comma, including the growth allocation method, comma, the residential planning, community, district, comma, in addition to the forest conservation regulations and an article.
And, and which, I, I see one edit, sorry, I'm being ADD. It's plans community. That's just something weird, but Kathleen, what word are you referring to?
Uh, it was, there were, I thought, three ands in it, and instead I thought they should just be separated by commas instead. And then at the very end have the, uh, in addition to the forest conservation regulations and an article establishing the Board of Port Warden.
Everybody okay with this? Can we move on?
Yes, if there's any objections to that. Hearing none. Moving on to number 19.
Sorry, Kathleen, I totally touched everybody was.
Number 20.
20. Okay.
Sorry, I lost.
What page?
120, 120 again.
Oh, still, okay.
Number 20 on page 120.
No, yeah, the first bullet point.
I think we agreed to discuss this not in this comprehensive plan area, but I think that, um, okay. I don't know. Cindy, you, you studied this better than I did. Do you have any comments?
Well, I'm going to make a, a motion to make some changes, so I was gonna wait to make those changes, and we have to come back here and make some changes here, maybe, maybe. I'll have to see how the motion moves.
Well, let's finish the comprehensive plan discussion, then we can go back to the zoning.
Well, uh, okay, I was going to make a motion to, um, remove the, uh, the extra six feet of freeboard to allow for the reasonable increases where required for flood mitigation and keep the height at 35 feet even in the 100-year flood zone. And the reason why I want to do that is because in the most vulnerable area of our town, we are putting more weight by adding more height. That extra six feet is more weight. And it's 200 pounds per square foot every time. And then when you go up to a second floor, I think it's 275 pounds a square foot for building. So every time we add, we're, we're putting more weight onto a, an area that's like a water bed with a leak in it. It's subsiding. So I would highly recommend that, uh, in this area, we do not increase that height for flood mitigation, and we do not have to. We can actually require that, uh, the people that build there just allow, uh, that part of their height includes the freeboard, hi, the freeboarding, which is six, which is five to six feet. So I would remove allowing for reasonable increases where required for flood mitigation. I would move to remove that.
So, so those homes will be more likely to flood in a storm?
Yes, and they're not only flooding, they're sinking in those areas. There's subsidence in all that area. So it's a very fragile and vulnerable, uh, flood zone. And we would be remiss in our duties of steward of this, uh, bay to allow. And we would be remiss in our duties as steward of this bay to allow any extra weight or height. So 35 feet across the board, including in the 100-year flood zone. It's silly to put extra height in our most vulnerable areas in the town.
Well, it's silly to get flooded out in a storm too.
Well, then you just raise it and you just have 29 feet of height. You still have two and a half stories. I mean, you've still got plenty of height. It's not like you've got a small, little, tiny, you know, in Del Mar, they only allowed 20 feet, 25 feet height. And they have no freeboarding there. So it's not like you have to have the freeboarding. You just raise up and have less amount of footage in your structure. And I don't know why we don't ask that of people. It's a little silly.
What, what study are you basing this on?
What study of what? It's the, the engineer was just.
Reducing the height by five feet is going to affect the subsidence of houses. I'm just wondering what.
Well, okay, doesn't it make any sense to you, Larry, that we have, when you have weight in an area that's subsiding, that you're going to, I, even our engineer, our town engineer addressed the town council one time, or I think it was somebody, Chris, I don't know who it was. And he basically said that it's like a big water bed out there in that whole area. And when you push down on it, you can see how the water is squishing up and you can see that weight is not helping the area as far as the flooding is concerned. It's making it worse. So.
I'm not a, I'm not a ground engineer, so I'm, I'm, I would, I'd like to see some study showing that because I, you know, my common sense is not what I want to rely on in this case. Common sense tells me that in a flood or in a heavy storm, that somebody's gonna get flooded out of their house. If they're allowed to move up five feet, they may not get flooded out of their house.
Okay, then, then why, why is it that we can't then ask them to just have a shorter structure? Why is it that you have to keep going up higher and reducing, and, and just enlarging the, the structure of the building? Um, why is it that they can't just make a 29-foot building? So that we can have a standardized 35 feet for the entire town for every structure? There are reasons why, I mean, if you want to go into the fact that, um, we, we have, we have the town engineers who are actually talking about this constantly. And I can't, I'm surprised, and in fact, Chris, I think you even talked about it yourself once, how that is subsiding and that any extra weight, we have it in the flood management ordinance where they want to reduce any intense building over in that area just because it is a, a, a safety hazard. And I mean, it's in our, it's in our flood management ordinance. You can read that. I just, in fact, I just pulled it up. I should read to you what it says in that. Let me see if I can find that.
So we should apply more restrictive height limitations up south of town where we've got the cliff problem. I mean, that increased weight affects the cliffs, so we should cut them all back by six feet. I'm, I, the answer is it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, floodplains are an important asset to the community. They perform vital natural functions such as a temporary storage of floodwaters, moderation of peak flow, flood flows, and maintenance of water quality, groundwater recharge, prevention of erosion, habitat for diverse natural wildlife populations, et cetera. And then it goes on to say that, um, these functions are best served if floodplains are kept in their natural state. Wherever possible, the natural characteristics of floodplains and their associated wetlands and water bodies should be preserved and enhanced. And that is in our floodplain management ordinance that is on our website. So right there, it's telling you.
You say anything about building or weight?
I'm sorry?
I, I didn't hear you mention building height or weight in.
Right, right.
Quoted.
Well, up, up on B Street, we, we have an instance where there was a variance given to go over 35 feet. It went over 35 feet and then the building structurally toppled on the, the house next door, destroying both of them.
Right, and that's not in a flood zone though.
Right.
That's, that's a different problem, right?
But it goes to the, the increased height is, makes the greater weight and makes the structure more vulnerable is up here on this float, but it's not the floodplain. You are correct.
Mr. Chairman, I might o- offer some, some context here, just not to argue one way or the other, but just to put it in context. First, this map here, that's the floodplain map and it's in our, in our plan. Uh, in the introductory part of the plan, everything with a hashed mark is in the floodplain. Everything that's not covered by the hashed mark is not in the floodplain. So what we're talking about is a relatively small portion of the town. It's really from the Veterans Memorial here north, if you follow this narrow line all the way up. And, and then just before we get to the cluster of houses on C Street, the floodplain stops. So Cindy, the, the place that you're referring to, Kellam's Field and all that, that is subsiding, but that is not yet in the floodplain. That is, with the sea level rise, it's gonna be impacted and eventually will be in the floodplain, but it's not impacted now.
So the point is, is that because you have a house that could get flooded, it means that you get extra height. But it doesn't mean that, uh, it doesn't, the point is that we shouldn't be able to have a height limitation anyway. It seems as though we're, um, you know, we're taking, we're not taking advantage of the idea that we should be, um, mitigating the negative impacts of taller buildings. And when you go up to 41 feet, you're a taller building. And, and that's if you're on the natural grade of land. If they're not filling the land or if they're not, you know, making the pad higher, which I know they've done in North Beach. You know, you could get up to 50-foot high along the coast, which means that all of those coastal houses will be up to 50 feet by the time they're done, or 45 feet or 50 feet around there. But why is it that we can't impose a 35-foot height limit along the, the waterline there? And allow the people behind the waterline to actually get some of the breezes and the views and, and have some of the enjoyment of the water, of, of the water and of the bay?
Okay, so this is about view and enjoyment of the bay. It's not about subsidence?
Well, I mean, you can have it for about whatever reason you want, but as far as the floodplain is concerned, I don't know why you have to go up when you can just still have a 35-foot height limit and just make the structure shorter for the people that, that build it. Why, why is it that you have to have an extra six feet because you happen to get a bay, you know, you get to be along the bay? I don't, I'm not understanding why that is allowed when, you know, that means you're just taking away the views of people behind you.
So, um, it's just, if I can just continue, the, the zoning or the floodplain regulations require that buildings be elevated, so it's not, it's not an option. So someone in the floodplain, these relatively few properties that are in the floodplain, have to build through the base flood elevation, which is five feet. So they have to build five feet off the ground, or excuse me, four feet off the ground in most cases, and then two feet extra, which is called freeboard. And that puts them at six feet, which is the safe zone. Um, and, and that, that's why, as Cindy says, the height would be 41 feet if you built a full 35-foot tall housing unit. The, the, so you, you have to build out of the floodplain. If you had the cap on building height, that would mean that folks in the flood zone would not be able to build as much livable space in their house as a house outside of the floodplain, right? Because they would be capped.
Right.
They would, pretty smaller.
Right.
The, and so, so that's, that's fine. I mean, if, if, if the objective is to keep building sizes down and that's a, that's a, you're balancing things out, fine. But where this comes into most difficulty is for those people that have houses in the floodplain now that want to raise their house out of the floodplain. This may prevent them or make it very difficult. That's a practical issue of this type of provision. The other thing is that there.
I would add that that affects their, their ability to get insurance on their house if they can't raise it out of the floodplain.
Yeah, you, you've done, yes, that's, that is.
You could do it except.
On this topic. Um, and the other thing is that we're, want to encourage uh, better construction methods in these areas prone to be flooding. Some residential communities may actually have to replace the buildings. And if you could think of the, the multifamily buildings or townhouses on the waterfront now, they are in the floodplain and they are getting hit by sea level rise. Uh, those buildings already are taller than 35 feet. And if those areas were to redevelop, they would and, and be capped at 35 feet, they wouldn't be able to develop anywhere near the current intensity. Just so you know that going into this. It's a very complicated issue that brings in a lot of interest and conflicting concerns.
Yeah, so what exactly is your motion, Commissioner Greenfield?
Well, as far as this particular, on page 120, I would want to remove the ink, um, let's see, reduce the maximum building height to 35 feet. I agree to that, but I would like to amend this by striking allowing for reasonable increases where required for flood mitigation.
Okay, that's the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Commissioner Brought seconded. All in favor of removing that phrase?
Aye.
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 Commissioner Larson? Well, the motion passes. So, uh, all right, so we move on to number 21, page 120 again. Bonus density overlay. So Chris, uh, any comments on this?
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is, um, so the planning commission can increase both the density and the building heights. So I don't know why you would eliminate the words residential density. It seems like a fuller explanation of the bonus density overlay suggests you should mention densities and building heights. This proposal is to delete residential densities.
Okay, and so Commissioner Blackwelder?
So I, I just, I just wonder what that means. I mean, if there, I, if there's anything in the bonus density overlay that refers to commercial, but I think if we just keep it consistent as remove all references to the bonus, bonus density overlay in its entirety, which is what Chris has proposed we do anyways, that would just clear it all up.
Okeydoke.
And there you have it.
Okay, any, uh, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to have that wording say, remove the, remove all references to the bonus density overlay district in its entirety, in their entirety.
So that, this is what you wrote there or you're changing it?
Um, I, it looks like I'm changing it because I wrote something weird, it looks like.
Well, we need to give Chris some direction.
Yeah, just remove, remove all references to the bonus density overlay districts in their entirety.
Do we need a second?
Well, yeah, we don't have a second.
A second, okay.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all in favor of making the modification that Mr. Blackwelder just proposed essentially removing the bonus, bonus overlay density entirely?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Moving on to motion, uh, to number 22, page 121.
Hot tamale.
Okay. So this is, um, I, 121 is in the implementation chapter. Um, and so the whole thing is we need to understand the density of certain areas because without understanding like what impact our development, like, I don't even know. I would love to get a overview of the impact of the development that's underway at the Rodden Real. We didn't get, um, a capacity analysis and impact analysis based on, you know, commercial capacity. Or, uh, uh, just that whole area needs to be addressed comprehensively. And that's what this bullet says. It just says, let's look at all aspects of the code. Let's figure out what kind of density we can have there and let's make the code reflect it and make sense. And I think we do a lot of piecemeal code that says, you can't do this. And then something comes back in and, you know, like, we're gonna move residential and tourist homes, but oh, there's hotel rooms and, or are we just, we can't just say, we can't have this, we can't have that. We, that can't always be our answer to everything. We, we really need a density package and we need to to determine what fits and other, you know, maybe this is like very high level code writing. Maybe we need to hire, you know, an assistant for Chris because I know he's very busy. But, um, you know, there's commercial capacity regulate, there's all kinds of complicated density regulations. And I think we need that. We just built something really big and, and it bleeds into a road that's really small. And so I, I just think that, that the simple approach while we're making that now, I think that a density package that says, you know, what, how, if you're gonna allow hotel rooms, well, how much capacity can they have? How many people can fit in that area? And it just is more complex than just, yes, you can have this, no, you can have that. So that's what that bullet.
Okay, so what we're recommending is that the planning commission created, uh, these density regulations?
No, in fact, I'm, I don't think the planning commission's job is to make regulations. Uh, we're not.
We draft, we, we make proposals for them.
Well, I.
Starts with us.
We propose, we propose visions and ideas and then we rely on experts and we.
Well, but it starts with us.
Right, and so my starting point is saying, and can somebody provide us with some density options and some ways to address our code that address density? Because that's above my skill level and it's needed. So that's what that bullet kind of says, like, can we just go more in depth to, to the things that affect density and the regulations that we can put in place that can help us address density?
Okay.
No, I mean, you can recommend that to the town council that they, they hire more people. That's, uh, sure they'll buy into that. Um, so, uh, Um, so, uh, this is, the recommendation stands as written?
Um.
Chris, did you want to?
Yeah, yeah, so this is proposed to be placed under the immediate term text amendments and I've already prepared those text amendments for you. This is a fairly substantial set of text amendments. And I think, to be fair, it would involve coordinating with individual property owners. You typically don't arrive at this level of detail until you do a master plan for an area and really figure out what your goals are, what the capacities are. This is really premature and certainly we couldn't do a professional level job on this in any type of rushed area, a timeframe. It can't be part of the intermediate or immediate list of zoning changes. You could make it part of a longer term text amendments. I mean, we're already talked about doing a kind of a plan for the the gateway district coming into town. And certainly that would, we'd have a sense of what the dimensional standards ought to be. And we're talking about design standards and a study of design. And those standards are not just about what buildings look like, but are about siding, buildings and all of that. So it may be better to sort of address those types of issues in the context of something longer term than than short term.
So in the short term, Chris, how how can we understand what we're permitting? I mean, we're just going to have to go bare bones in order to protect the area.
Yeah, so let me answer that. There there are no, only a few developable parcels in the commercial zones now. The building heights are proposed to be reduced to thirty-five feet. If if you can't bring buildings out of the floodplain, then they're effectively, you can't put parking underneath buildings. So you have to build parking lots, which reduces the building footprint. You can't do housing or mixed use buildings. I I think you've substantially reduced the allowable intensity. I mean, in a major way. Now, we could go through the exercises of figuring all these details out, but we also have a lot of regulations in place that that deal with these things when an applicant actually submits something for plan review. Stormwater management is evaluated, traffic is evaluated, all types of physical details and planning is studied at that time. So I guess that's my answer.
Seems to me where the question is, what does immediate mean and what does longer term mean? I think what Chris has implied is that immediate is those that we're going to turn in with the comprehensive plan and longer term are the ones after that.
Right.
So so what you're proposing is that the town hire additional staff before they can, well, and initiate a study and come up with the regulations before we submit the comprehensive plan?
I would love to recommend that.
Well, you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Can you restate the motion, please?
Yes, please.
Larry, I didn't write it down. But I liked exactly what it was. I would like to make a motion to recommend that the town council hire additional staff to study density in in the maritime area and the town center area in order to study density before the comprehensive plan goes into effect. Larry said it so much better.
I will second for discussion.
Okay.
I'm concerned that if there is no budget to hire somebody, that we will never finish this comprehensive plan. That could be deadly. I don't know. I appreciate that.
I mean, actually, if we if we put that recommendation in and then we don't finish the compre-, it's a it's a circular argument. We're saying you can't finish the comprehensive plan until you complete the immediate thing. But we can't submit the immediate things until we complete-
That is correct, that is circular.
So I don't want that, I don't need that.
No.
I just, as a caveat, I would say that when we go to, you know, making the code and going over this code, we're just going to have to go very bare bones with it and rather than liberal, just to protect ourselves. And that wouldn't be necessary if we could find some of these people. So the recommendation is to, or the the motion is for the town to hire additional staff that can that can accommodate an intensive study potentially in time.
Can can we do that in the meeting? Can we put that into one of the medium, immediate term? Can we make that into one of our goals in the immediate?
The longer term?
The longer term or something. I'm just concerned that if we wait to get those answers, we may never complete this process.
We're not, we're not going to finish the plan if we if we wait for this.
Right. Why don't we just make the recommendation outside of the comprehensive plan?
Excellent, I like that idea.
Yep.
So then they can consider the recommendation. Um.
And we withhold the comprehensive plan until until that's done?
I don't know if we would do that. I don't know if I would rec- I don't know the legal peril to doing that, but um, I I don't know, is my answer. We can recommend that to the to the town and they can, it's a legal peril as well of doing that. But I think that that is a step that we need to take sooner rather than later.
Okay, so what am I hearing you say that you you're withdrawing this from a recommendation in the comprehensive plan and that you'll submit it separately as a motion to the town council for immediate action?
Yes, let me read what, let me make sure. Yes, I would like to recommend it outside the comprehensive plan for-
Okay, that makes sense.
And Mr. Chairman, let me say for the record that the town doesn't need to retain someone else outside of the normal planning and zoning process. We were capable of doing that, simply not capable of doing it and delivering a comprehensive plan at the same time.
Right, right, that's the 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 idea is that we complete the comprehensive plan and and this motion or suggestion, resolution, whatever, submitted town council, asking them to I don't know, hi- hire more people, I don't know. We, resources are limited, we can only do so many things at one time.
Chris, you're suggesting that, Chris?
Yes.
Yep, so you're suggesting that we don't need the extra people, that we have the capacity within our commission to do that work, but it's not going to happen before the plan is done, is that what I hear you're saying?
Yes, and it's also better not to have it done until the plan is done. Once the plan is done, we can go through a more comprehensive update of the cop- of the zoning ordinance, thoroughly updating a lot of sections. So it could be part and parcel of that effort. In fact, it would be, I mean, that's the typical process that you do. So.
Yeah, I just, sometimes, Chris, you could use, you know, some more people and and I would like to-
Why, Lori?
We don't get things always in advance enough or in a state that is complete enough and then we're adding a lot of stuff on to a one, you know, you're a one man show, Chris, it's not anything on you. It's it's difficult to be a one man show and I don't, I think that-
Well, it's not a one man show, it's Chris and associates, if you've read his letterhead.
It is, and the way you're characterizing things is a bit unfair, Lori. I think we could talk offline if you'd like to.
But I I don't think personnel business is where we're at. That's not our job. Our job is to to recommend things related to planning and zoning and-
Aspirational things, yep.
Okay, well, the recommendation in some shape or form, we need a density package and we need a more, a deeper dive into what regulation control both commercial and residential density.
So Chris, Chris had suggested earlier that we put that on the longer term text amendments, the wording that you have.
So and that's okay, but we should all be aware that if we, that we're going to get intense projects proposed in those areas almost immediately. So I I'm, all the council members and the the mayor can listen to our meeting and make their own decision, you're right, it's not for us to decide, but that is what is needed very quickly. So save it as a comment, put it somewhere, I I don't really know how to address it, but.
Well, as I, I understand that you're, we've talked about studies are necessary because we don't know what's necessary and it will take some time to put that together and understand what the the density objectives are for the town council picks, which also plays into this, so. Um, I I would say if if we're going to add it, we could add it under longer term studies or longer term actions, something like that uh, to look at it in the future.
Okay, I'm open to-
And we might, we might be able to bring it up as soon as we're done with this project. That'd be the next thing that we ask Chris to help us on is to complete that as a project. So I would recommend that we hold off on that and and wait until we're, we've completed this. I know that, Laura, you're right, we're going to have these projects coming in, but we're going to have to do our best without that and just allow us to complete this comprehensive plan and then we'll ask Chris to move forward with that density plan.
Sweet.
Okay, is there consensus on what Commissioner Greengold has suggested?
Yes.
One?
I think Kathleen, Kathleen is dead, she went to sleep.
Okay, well, um, part of this section of our agenda says, uh, motion, well, then, no, the next, we can, the commission reviewed the draft consolidated plan, a motion to release the draft consolidated comprehensive plan for the sixty day public comment period and sets of subsequent public hearing date. Can I get recommendations from Chris on what that means?
That would be at least sixty days from from tonight. And I think what it means is that I need to consult with the mayor's office on the appropriate date, but it would certainly be within just after sixty days, so late October, early November would be the the approximate timeframe.
Okay, so, uh, I will make the motion that we uh, approach the that we make the the comprehensive plan update as amended with all the amendments that have been submitted so far available to the public for the sixty day comment period and that we ask the town to set the hearing, we set the hearing date, don't we?
Well, obviously, we coordinate, we have to coordinate with the the town to make sure the space is available and the we have to do public notifications and quite a bit of work to for that. But we wouldn't set the date unless the planning commission couldn't be there. I mean, it could be at a planning commission meeting or it could be at a special night during the week. But certainly it's going to be sixty days away from tonight.
Well, it'd be sixty days from when you make it public.
Right, because there are changes to be made.
Chairman Brown?
Yes, that's right.
Uh, Commissioner Brolle?
Um, before we release it tonight for the public, I think there there are edits, grammatical edits and spelling and spacing that need to be done. I, you know, just what I've reviewed so far. And I just, I think they should be corrected before it's released. So it reflects better on the zoning commission.
I fully intend to do that, we're going to do that, Sharon and I, right away. And following the lead that you presented tonight, these changes. And then it would be available to be posted and sent to the state, sent to the county, sent to North Beach, placed in the library.
Well, as I've said before, commissioners, if you find editorial edits or spellings or whatever, send them directly to Chris, they don't need to come to the commission for approval.
Absolutely, I'm happy to do that. Do I have a time that I can, when you, a date, Chris, that you would want them?
You've got till the end of August, August twenty-fifth.
Oh, you are a devil.
It's going to take us a couple of days, so within a couple of days, three or four days, I think, would be fine.
By Monday. To you by Monday, that would be sufficient?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, I will.
Um, Chairman Brown, may I speak?
Yes, yes.
Um, would it be okay if Chris could include our edits and then send out the digital copy and then we make our edits? And that way it truly would be final. Um, and there wouldn't be, you know, edits lost in translation that that got missed.
Well, edit, I would say editorial, spelling, phrasing, those are, those are things that don't need the commission's attention. Other items of substance, after the report is made public, we can, those can be brought up as late as the public hearing, so. I'm I'm not sure what what we would hold it up for since we don't, as I far, as far as I know, have any substantial
Well.
issues with the report now.
I think it would be fair and wise, we would get a better product if it was sent to us. And we shouldn't, I mean, Chris will, Chris will add everything and and likely we'll just look at it and and bless offer, that's pretty typical process in most organizations I've been in. If you've worked on a collaborative, long-
I I agree with you, Lori, it makes makes good sense to me.
Yeah, and then we can just edit from that and and then all of the edits will be, you know, it'll be a better edit. So I I would request that that courtesy and that that, you know, that standard process to be used here.
Okay, so my, I had the motion that we release it for public comment. And do I have a second for that? Hearing no second, then we don't make a date, we don't set a hearing. We'll do that at our next meeting in September.
Mr. Brown, Chairman Brown, can I make my motion? Mr. Brown, Chairman Brown, can I make my motions? Can I go back to my agenda items quickly?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, it's on my list here.
Okay, thank you. I don't want you to forgive me. I don't want you to forgive me.
We will not do the comprehensive plan this month. Delay it another month.
May I ask the commission to reconsider that, please? We, we do have an obligation to get this document out and we're just talking about minor editorial changes. We can agree to post it and still you can make your editorial changes with Sharon's help over the course of the next couple of days.
I agree.
Not changing the plan substantively anymore. This is it. We're going to the public now. So let's, let's go to approve it. Get it out there.
And it's not final. I mean, this is a draft and it's being, we have comments, we'll have changes, we'll get comments from North Beach, from the county, from the state. I think we're just delaying it for delaying sake.
Well, Chairman Brown?
Go ahead, Kathleen.
I, I just want to say, um, I, I don't necessarily, I understand Lori's point about being able to see the document after all the edits have been done, but I, I think to send that document out without everybody giving it one last glance for grammatical, I think we look like morons, frankly, if we have spelling errors and we have, you know, the solvication wrong, I, I think we just, we look unprofessional. We, we just look slipshod and I think it should, it deserves a, a grammatical edit before it goes out.
Well, um, we were depending on you and the others to take a look at it through Monday, I think we said, but that.
Right.
That's fine with me.
But we don't have the whole document to look at, so we're not looking at a completed document. We should edit from a completed document.
You have the completed document, commissioners.
Well, we make changes tonight.
Yes, and, but I thought you agreed to each of the changes. I mean, the changes were from almost, there was no substantive changes that have to, that take time to rewrite. These are just changes that Sharon and I will do, just filling in. You saw me make most of the changes right in the text of the document. I'm, I'm all for sending it out to you so you can review it, but let's, let's release it. Let's agree tonight. We're not going to be able to meet again for another month.
I don't think we need to meet to get the final document and bless off and say, yes, this is my grammatical errors. Yes, everything that was included was included. That doesn't require a meeting. But it is a courtesy for us to release a document that we get to see it first.
I, I think we're saying the same thing and all I'm asking is that tonight you say that we're going to go ahead and release the document after we've done this internal editing. But we, we can only make this judgment about releasing it when we're in a public session. So that's why I'm suggesting that the chairman's initial motion was spot on. That allows us to move forward. We will work.
Like release after review of final implement and edit by the planning commission.
I think that's beautiful. I think that's fine. That's exactly what we would have done.
I second the motion. I second.
Lord, I thirded.
We will get a copy and we will be able to verify that everything is as we want. We're not, you know, but we get to look at it for, you know, language that wasn't in the copy we had and now suddenly appeared. We get to look at it and that's all I'm asking. And we'll give it a good edit and it'll be a better product.
All right, so my motion failed. We have a motion on the floor?
Yes. I, well, Lori had a motion and I seconded that motion that we have a copy of the final and we review it and it, it would then we go ahead and, and release it for the 60 days.
But didn't, didn't Chris just say that we have to agree to release it in a public
That's what, that's what he said.
Yeah.
So how are we going to do that? Have a, a 15 minute Zoom meeting or 10 minute Zoom meeting? But then we have to announce it to people. We have, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, Lori, and, and I agree, but to bump this back another 30 days is.
I don't think we need to bump it back another 30 days. I, I think your idea is great. Let's have a Zoom meeting, make it public. It's five minutes and we have all.
We have to announce the Zoom meeting and, and.
How much time is necessary for that?
Oh, well, you have to give the public a few days, you know. Can't announce it in the morning and have it in the evening.
Are we capable of a five minute meeting?
And if the changes are purely editorial, spelling and phrasing, then there's no reason, in my view, we can't let it out, we can't approve publishing it to the public after Monday to allow days, a few days to look through it and make corrections. There will be corrections after that. We'll have public comments. We've got a lot more work to do on this. This is not done, but got to get started.
I've had things that have been passed not included in the con plan months in a row. I would like to see it before we release it. I've had my motions that passed not included. We recommended having a adequate public facilities ordinance and recommending to have, to include that as a recommendation. Well, we got the plan back and it recommended against having an adequate public facilities ordinance. After all that has happened on this commission and all the things that have gone out and come back in and gone out and come back in, we deserve a look at this plan before we release it to the public. It's only fair.
And you'll have another look at it and be able to make further recommendations and changes in the next 60 days. Anyway.
Well, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Ma, or Chairman Brown, excuse me. I think, I think Lori, Lori, I don't mean to speak for you, but I, I, I understand where you're coming from, that we're talking about things that we say they're editorial, but if we can't eyeball them, they might have been written in such a way that it was not what we intended, I guess. And but I, I don't know how to handle the timing of it, Lori, because you know, maybe we could, could, could we make a motion that the that we release it to the public or five days from now or Monday, the 30th or whatever it is for editorial, you know, changes or what have you, then we take a look at it.
Why don't we?
I think five day, I wish, you know, what is that, Monday, Tuesday? That's what we already talked about.
Right. And so. I'm sorry, Lori. No, what I, what I'm saying is I want it to be released, but I absolutely get what you're saying, that we want to make sure that the intent on the commission's part is reflected in the documents. So can we give permission to release it? I guess, Chris, I'm, maybe I'm asking you, can we give you permission to, or give us permission to release it on Monday and then have those changes made grammatical and otherwise? No? What?
To release it, you can't change it. And that's why we deserve a final blessing in case something comes out weird. We can, we've made the motions. The motions are here on, you know, we've reflected in our minutes and so we can do that over email. It's not like we're re-meeting about anything, but we should be able to receive the completed document, review it, make what's accidentally left.
Why don't we agree? Why don't we agree to meet in what, 10 days? We'll get the document, we'll do all the edits by Monday, all grammatical edits. Chris can give us a final document and then in one week, we will ha, will have gotten the full document in the interim and then we'll meet in a week and then send it out. We'll have a an emergency meeting, 15 minutes to say yay, and then it goes out.
We can certainly ask for that, but I'd point out that we have to get town support to have these meetings. This is not simply us. We have to, we have Sharon and the town administrator, Holly Wall. There's, there's more involved than just saying we, we want to.
I understand, but that just seems like.
We can ask, we can ask when the next, we could have the next meeting and have probably, I don't know, two, a week, two weeks.
No. I.
More than 10 days if possible, as quickly as we can after Monday and yeah.
Well, it depends on, depends on other people's schedules. I mean.
Chairman, but if you, if you ask as quickly as possible, feasible, then that would not delay it another month, which I totally understand and, and support that.
Okay, I need some clarification here for a minute. If the, the I guess we'd have to release tonight. It's okay. All right. No, I see what you're saying, Kathleen. I don't even want to wait 10 days. I'd like to, to get it done, but I absolutely think we should be able to eyeball it. And if it's as we all agreed, then that's not a meeting, is it? I mean, we're just making sure that what we see reflects what we've already agreed to in motions and everything else.
But we have to have a public meeting to say that we're releasing it.
To release it.
Well, right, so well, we're, right now, we're saying that we're releasing it with as amended. So why can't we get a final eyeball on as amended as a planning commission?
Got it, got it. Yeah.
And you can communicate through email that it's as amended. In the meantime, we could be scheduling the public hearing and doing the organizational work we need to do.
Yep.
But we won't post it. We won't announce any hearing or anything until you guys give us the, the go ahead. That, the changes that we've made reflect word for word what was decided tonight.
Okay, so we can do that.
That's, that's what we intended to do, but what, what we need is an affirmative response that the plan is, is okay now to release to public, assuming these changes are made.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking for and that's what the town is asking you for.
Yes.
Please.
As amended, yeah, we can release it.
And we'll get your, your review here by Monday? Well, it depends on when you get it. When would we be able to pass it out? Uh, to the commissioners, Chris?
Well, that's going to depend on staff. I'm not doing all the editing. It's going to be Sharon and staff that's going to be doing that kind of work. So it's, you know, it, and it's kind of the material. As long as you, we're going to make sure it gets there to you as soon as possible and allow you enough time to send us any type of grammatical changes. But as soon as possible. We need to sit down and figure out how to do this as quickly as possible. But, uh, give us a space to figure that out. We'll, we'll get that, this Monday might be too soon for everybody to, I know Kathleen, I would like to do a real editing of the document and I think that's fantastic. I don't want to pressure her to have it done by Monday, but we, you saw most of the changes were done already during meeting. The map needs to be incorporated into that forest map into the text. So I'll need to write some kind of language that ties it into the existing paragraphs. Other than that, everything else is fairly direct and, and pretty small scale.
So it should be true. That's quick for us too, once we get it and look at it.
So we'll agree to release it once we confirm that it's reflects tonight's and every other night information. Is that right?
Tonight's edits.
Right.
Right.
But we can, we can release it subject to that. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not going to release, it's not being released until you guys give me the okay that the edits that were talked about tonight have been made properly. And you could do that through email. You can send an email out to everybody, group email. Looks good to me, looks good to me, looks good to me. If, if everybody comes back and it looks good, we'll go ahead and announce the public hearing date.
What if there, what are, if there are changes or substantive changes that are recommended by some of the commissioners?
I think the, the suggestion is that there's no more substantive changes until until after the public hearing. If, if someone has, you know, someone decides that they want to make another substantial change, they can come to the public hearing and speak on their own behalf about the plan, or they can ask me to give the planning commission's report, you know, you, you might say, we recommend the plan, but then we thought about something and we'd like to suggest something else. As long as it gets on the public record and everybody hears it.
Right, right.
Take it up and make the change after the public hearing.
I think that's a good plan. We will agree to release it subject to tonight's discussion. We'll get a review. If anything's left out, we can just let you know over email. You can add it. And then you'll make a date to release the public. Is that right?
That's right. That's exactly. In the meantime, we're gonna be organizing and trying to figure out when the best date is and doing what we need to do to gear up to produce the report, make copies and all that's involved with that.
Okay.
Does that?
A consensus that we will release the report subject to editorial changes and ensuring the tonight's changes are made correctly.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's like a good plan.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, Commissioner, is there any more discussion on that? Hearing none. Commissioner Green Gold?
I'm going to quickly get through this so we can complete this meeting early. Oh, yeah, early. Okay, so let's go back to the building, the proposed zoning ordinance amendments that you received in your package. If you all have that and you can look at that.
Yep.
I think I'm going to make this really simple. I get, I sent, I sent Chris the emails that have the changes I wanted to make, but maybe to make it even easier, what I will do is just recommend to move approval of amendments one, two and three with these amended changes. Um, I would like to cross out at the bottom of the uh, the bottom of the table, it says a number, number it four. I would like to cross out and number it four.
Right.
Okay.
Because that number doesn't exist, right, Chris?
Correct.
Okay.
And then when, then below that, it says quote, number four, period. I want to remove that. So strike out that number four, quotation mark four, period.
The two fours, right.
Yeah, put a, take out, away those, strike out those fours and between the words may and be on the second line of those bold letters down there, between may and be, put not. So it would read for those buildings in the designated 100 year flood plain, the 35 foot building height limit may not be exceeded by the required amount of the flood protection elevation as defined in the flood plain management ordinance. And that would correspond to what we just put into the into the comprehensive plan. So I would, I would make that motion with those amended changes. So that would be amendments one, two and three. And with those three changes, crossing out number at four, crossing out the number four and adding the word not.
Isn't number four on, on the Isn't number four on, on the chart? For example, maximum open space with a four above it. What does that refer to?
I couldn't find anywhere, Chris. Do you have any idea where the number four comes from?
It's, would be the fourth note on the table.
But there are five, there are already five notes on that table. I've already looked. If you go to that 29019A, there were five notes. So number four does not, go, if you want to go there, you can take a look and see if I'm.
Yeah, I'm going there just to make sure.
Isn't it a footnote? I thought it was a footnote.
Yeah, I have three notes on my version. So that's why I suggested.
Interesting.
Oh.
Wait a minute.
Oh, okay.
See, the notes down below is what we were talking about.
Yeah, okay, that's right. So there are two tables in this section. And the table with the building height is the second table, so the note would be six.
Yeah, it would be six. So you do want to, you want to, should I amend the amendment then and make it number six?
No, no.
No, okay.
How about number five? Does that still stand for you? Note five.
Note five. Specifical carms, exceptions, or such forth.
So I actually didn't really prepare for this section. But I have a question about that floodplain ordinance because it, it just, the floodplain ordinance defines the lowest level. And so I'm confused about how that ordinance falls in the ranking of other codes that we're writing because it defines the lowest level. It explicitly says it doesn't include this, that, and the other parking garage or, you know. I don't know what the exact wording is. But so if one piece of code trumps another piece of code, where are you at?
No, the two will work simultaneously. The, the, a building needs to be elevated from the, above the flood zone, okay? But it doesn't need to be above 35 feet. So Cindy's recommendation is to cap it at 35 feet, even though from the ground up, the first five or six feet is going to be open to allow floodwaters to pass through. It just means that the actual house is going to be shorter than it normally would be.
And so can we, if we're going to continue going up the code, can I just ask about this one area of the floodplain ordinance? I didn't print it. I just read it from, from our town webpage. But it's, it defines the lowest floor. And so I guess my question is, is if the floodplain ordinance defines the lowest floor differently than the other parts of the code define the lowest floor, who wins? Which part of the code wins?
The definition of the lowest floor with respect to the floodplain is, is a different application. It's the, the main, the overriding concern that you have here is the zoning ordinance and that rules building height and, and the proper measurement. So you, you, you don't have to be concerned with that low, lowest floor regulation. It's, it's not relevant to this kind of evaluation of building height. The, the two don't conflict in practice. If you set the building height at 35 feet, the lowest floor comes into place because wherever the lowest floor is, certain regulations flow through that.
Right, so wouldn't the building be higher effectively in the floodplain due to how the floodplain defines the lowest floor? And the way I read the floodplain ordinance is you could have two levels of parking garage because they don't qualify as the lowest floor. And then you start measuring, so.
No, no, no. The, the, the building height would be capped at 35 feet and it wouldn't matter where you started from. With, if you're building a new construction in the floodplain, you have to start from at least six feet. That's where the lowest livable space is. Now, you can have a garage. You can have, you know, an open space, unimproved space. But so if you start at six feet, I say you make it easy, start at five feet, you have 30, 34 feet, 30 more feet to fit your livable space in before you hit 35 feet.
So what you're saying is my worry is I don't have to worry. Nobody can build two levels of a parking garage and then start their ground floor after that.
Right, right. Because you're going to be capped at 35 feet. I mean, we don't know how people are going to actually build within their, their individual building, but we know that the whole building can't be taller than 35 feet as measured from the ground to, you know, the, the top.
If you go back to Cindy's definition that she started with.
Yep.
A building starts at the ground before being filled in. That's where the height starts. That's in the definitions.
Okay. I, yeah. I think us writing code requires us to look at the, all the code together, so I'll just add a question. Yeah.
Yep.
I think Lori's concerned that we've got conflicting codes going on is what she's concerned about. And, you know, I, I've noticed that in the comprehensive plan, we've got some things that may be conflicting. We've got to, we've got to resolve. But all right, let's go back to this amendment since we've got a second. We had, do we have any more discussion? I want to kind of move on here. I want to get to the, the definition of building height.
Would you restate the motion for me, please?
Approve amendments one, two, and three. Uh, move to approve with these amend, with these amendments, with these changes, with these amendments. Let's just say with these amendments. First of all, Chris, did we want to number it five? Is that what you wanted to number it?
No, I actually want to number it, it's number six.
It's number six then.
Sixth note in that second table of 29019A.
Yep.
Okay, so we have to put numbers, okay, so then keep the number, say a number of six. Is that what you want to put down there and put six in the front of?
Yeah, I think, I think that's the best way. You would put six in front of the bold font here and then you would put may not be exceeded.
Okay, and then add the not. All right, so let me, let me just restate this so I have it accurate. So move approval of amendments one, two, and three with the amend, to, and amend the number to be six below the table and then six in front of the bold type and then include the word not between may and be.
Okay. Hello?
Yeah, I'm waiting for Mr. Chairman.
Oh, for what?
The motion?
That was the motion. I, I am expecting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. So what I would like to ask the permissions consideration of is that we have this written up with all of the changes and that it be published and we set our next meeting as a hearing on this zoning code recommendation.
I do not agree to that. I have changes to the RPC zone.
Well.
I didn't realize.
Okay, so we have one opposition, so, okay, well, that's it.
Uh, wait a minute. I, I just did the amendments on the one, two, and three. So what is, what did Lori say she had opposition to?
I have changes to be made to the RPC district description, and I think that.
But that's, we haven't gone over that yet.
No, I know, and that's why I opposed publishing this.
Oh, okay, you're talking, I was just, I thought Larry was just talking about the, the building height.
That was my understanding from our last meeting that we wanted to move the building height restrictions to the town council, but I've got one opposition to that.
Well, I would like, well.
I, I'm unclear of what we're moving to the town council. Removing the whole code?
No, just the planning, just the, the height, the, the building height. To the, I would like to, actually, let me make a motion. I would like to move, I would like to move that we direct staff, we direct the planning commission, the planning administrator, to forward this building heights amendment to the mayor, the town council, and the town administrator in the next five days.
And what, okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Um, I, I have a question. Discussion, please.
Can we, can we, do we have a second?
I'll second it so we can get into discussion.
Okay, so Commissioner Blackwell, go ahead.
Okay, so by us instructing the planning and zoning administrator to forward this amendment to the town council, are we, are we instructing them to do anything in particular? Or do they just see?
Well, it's just for amendments one, two, and three of the building heights. It's not about the zoning districts.
I understand. Here's, here's, okay, I'll make two comments. My first comment is I read in several places that if you downzone outside of comprehensive planning, it does not hold up as soundly legally as if you do it within comprehensive planning. And so I would say that they would need to consult their attorney to see, we are, this is comprehensive planning. We're in comprehensive planning. So it might not even matter that, that qualification. But I think that they should consult the attorney about whether it's advisable to make any amendments to the code outside of the comprehensive plan. So that's comment one.
Won't they do, won't they do that anyway?
What? I'm sorry.
Consult, won't the town consult their attorney anyway?
I guess so. I, I mean, they might not be focused on that issue, but, you know, it's something that I happen to stumble upon that, that could be more vulnerable. I don't know, you know. I don't know if that presents legal peril, but they'll, I'll watch this meeting and so I'm sure they'll get the concern. My second comment is about us writing code and it's hard for us to, I, I just don't think that us per, we can recommend code and see where we don't think code matches our vision, but we can't go through every single, you know, we don't know where things are buried or we don't, we can't control it if we amend a code one way and then some other piece of code gets amended in a different way and then makes whatever we amend, amend it get messed up, so.
Well, Chris, Chris wrote this up. Chris, Chris put this one together, actually. I just amended his amendments. So it's not really making much.
I get it, but we're, we're amending, I mean, I.
First of all, what we, we are not, we're going to send things to the town council.
Yeah.
They will always send it to their attorney and it will come out different than what we wrote because they, the attorney will have his way with it, just as the moratorium that we proposed was rewritten by the attorney. Second point is we're, we're talking about sending this amendment, which we haven't seen with all the changes to the town council within the next five days, but we won't send, I mean, we, we want to see stuff before we send it, but we're, we're going to just send this one anyway. Boggles my mind, but I, I, I would ask the town, the planning commission to consider holding a hearing on this so the public has a chance to see what we're proposing as it's written and has a chance to comment on it.
Well, the town council will also have a public, public hearing on it though, correct? I mean, they.
That is correct. That is correct.
So we would have two public hearings on it?
We, we would only have one.
Is there a reason why we need to do it separately? I guess that's just my question. Like, is that necessary?
Is it necessary to inform the public and give them a chance to comment on what we do? I think it is.
Well, what I'm saying is, is, is all this is in the comprehensive plan and it will be part of a public hearing. So I, I just don't understand why we're doing this outside of it right now. Like, why, why we're fast-tracking this when it's all going to get adopted together anyways and go through a hearing?
Well, that's another, another good question. Why we would fast-track this? It seems, in my opinion, the town council will want to see the comprehensive plan, see the big picture before they start adopting pieces of the comprehensive plan. And, and the, uh, this, this particular piece, I think, will have some, have some public interest. So.
Well, if, if you have two public hearings though, won't it take longer to get to the town, I mean, to get out of the public than the comprehensive plan? I mean.
We're talking, we're talking two issues. One, why are we rushing this? And the second one is, should we give the public a chance to look at it? You know, the public may have, have some interesting ideas to give to us that we haven't thought of. And it just goes back, earlier this week, I was thinking about where we have, we have the comprehensive plan that we allow the public 60 days to make comments on, but our, our code, the law we operate under, doesn't require us to do a hearing on the codes that implement the comprehensive plan. We have to have a hearing on the comprehensive plan, but no hearing on the codes that implement the comprehensive plan. Now, it seems upside down to me. So we have two issues, I think. One, one is, is there urgency in sending this a height amendment to the town council before we send the comprehensive plan up? And the second one is, do we want to see it in writing and have a, a hearing on it?
The only urgency would be is if it would assist us in, or assist Chris in determining whether or not a plan should go through or should be modified or whatever. That would be the urgency, I guess. So I'd have to ask Chris that.
I think doing it early pay off. Everybody knows what we're talking about. They've already heard. The public knows already.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, the motion is to send this, these changes that we don't have a final on, to the town council within five days, and to the mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes.
Does anybody have any life left in them, or should, should I hold off on amendment four, which would be the changing of the height definite, height limit definition? I know, it's, it's something I would love to do tonight, but I don't know if anybody has the energy for it. I mean, by the time, I'm figuring we have to have hearings anyway, so it's not going to be a, a big deal if we wait a month on the definition. What do you think, Chris?
I think I'd appreciate that, because I'd like to really get into that definition and make sure I can explain it to the commissioners.
Okay, then maybe the two of us can work on that definition a little bit?
Yeah, I'd like that, sure.
Okay. All right, I will table that amendment four at this point.
Bless your sister.
So that, so that, I can take pity on you guys.
The molly's going around.
Okay, so item, item nine on our agenda is a discussion of the zoning administrators' proposed zoning map. Is there any interest in doing item nine?
I, I would prefer that we be fresh before we go through all this.
We need a, we need some time to go over that.
Anyone else? We have two that say delay.
Tell me again, forgive me. What are we doing?
Well, we have zoning map changes that.
Stop laughing at me.
I'm laughing at me. I don't know what's going on.
If I took pity on you, then he's gonna take pity on us. So we should table it and move it to next month.
We have motion to table it and move it to next month?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, is there anybody in the public left out there that would like to make a comment on tonight's
Well, give them whatever they want. They deserve it.
Chairman Brown.
It's a free for all.
Yes. Councilman Morris.
Uh-oh, he went to.
Yeah, I'm trying to do my video. Oh, there we go. Hold on, bear with me a second, please. Yeah, thanks. Here we go. Yeah, I should feel bad for adding more time to what must be one of your most longest meetings.
Oh, no, it's not.
I wanted to thank everybody for your time, and I've been with you most every step this evening. And I've smiled and laughed a lot. Y'all have been a good group. I wanna thank Holly and Chris for their endurance, and Chris for his professional guidance in getting us, helping us get to the finish line successfully in, in many aspects. I wanted to point out that the Kellums meeting, number one, was a report that was submitted, dated June of this year, and was submitted to town hall in time, was made part of last council meeting. I forwarded that to all of the elected commissioners, well, to all the appointed commissioners this evening, with the exception of Jeff. Jeff, and I do wanna apologize, I should've taken the time to dig out your email, and I should've, but I just asked your colleagues to forward it to you. It's a simple two-page report, and please let it serve as testimony of our committee's goals and objectives, aspirational regarding the use of that most precious space there, that's Kellums complex there. We're certainly open to discussing at a future meeting with you, but I kinda feel the, the report is self-explanatory. And again, the report contains the committee's goals and objectives regarding the Kellums complex up there, so we had been working on that. I just don't think we all realized it was what it is. So, you know, on that, I'm not gonna add anymore to, three and a half hours. And again, I wanna thank everybody for their time. The rubber's hitting the road here. Y'all have my full support. I know there's some, some talk of a few things, and, and I'm in line with, with, with everything. I appreciate moving things along, too. That's, that's real important for all of us. We all wanna do a good job here. And I think when we look back, this time that you're spending, all this time that you all have been spending, we can all be real proud of that. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's very, very much appreciated.
Indeed.
Do we have anyone else that wants to comment? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
At everybody at one time.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night, guys. Thanks.
Good night, Mary Ellen.